I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we do roll call, please?
Councilmember Larson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Dan Han?
Present.
Councilmember Cox?
Present.
Councilmember Stubble?
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Present.
You have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Good to see everyone here, thank you. If you're here for the first time, a few things, please, put these things on stun. If you need to have a conversation, even a whispered one, please step outside and well away from the door so the sound doesn't travel in. Gets a little weird, even, even very quiet whispers back there have a way of rebounding and echoing up here, but we're glad to have you with us. And on that, let's move to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox. Seconded by Council-
If we don't get a second, does it, do we just go home?
I don't think so.
Well, screw it, the motion would die, and we would have very disappointed residents with us, John. So good thing we got a second. I don't believe there's any need for amendments, so call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Han.
Yes.
I, yes.
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 Wonderful, we move forward. First, starting our first public hearing, start that at 6:02. Ordinance 2025-12 granting a franchise to Northern Arapahoe Tribal Industries, Inc., DBA Wind River Internet, on behalf of itself and its affiliates to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Lander, Wyoming. And Lance, I think we've got you in terms of giving us an explanation.
This is still us going through all our franchises and making them current and consistent.
Simple, thank you. Um, I don't believe we're going to introduce and read the whole thing, that seems a little long. Actually, it's not that bad, but you want to read the whole thing there, Lance? You want me to read the whole thing? Why did I know? I asked, all right. The City of Lander, a notice of public hearing, ordinance 2025-12, an ordinance granting a franchise to Northern Arapahoe Tribal Industries, Inc., DBA Wind River Internet, on behalf of itself and its affiliates to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Lander, Wyoming. You are hereby notified that an opportunity will be given for you to comment for or against the franchise agreement, granting Northern Arapahoe Tribal Industries, Inc., DBA Wind River Internet, the non-exclusive right, privilege, and authority to construct, maintain, operate, upgrade, adjust, protect, support, raise, lower, disconnect, remove, and relocate its wires, conduits, conductors, cables, and related app, uh, appretices, facilities for its system, in, under, along, over, and across the present and future streets, roadways, avenues, courts, lanes, alleys, sidewalks, rights of way, and similar public areas of the city, right of way or rights of way, for the purpose of providing telecommunications services to the city's inhabitants here and after a franchise. The franchise area is defined as within the legal boundaries of the city. So a public hearing being held now, have we received any written comments? Great, let's open up for any public comments from the audience. We appreciate the number of prepositions that were in that. Okay, seen none, then we will close this hearing at 6:04. And open the next hearing at 6:04 also. So this is public hearing, ordinance 2025-13, amending Title II sale, licensing, and use of alcoholic and malt beverages, revoking, replacing, and superseding ordinances 1120 and 2024-5. Before we get into, and this one we're not going to introduce because that would take us until nine o'clock tonight, but folks have copies of it. And before inviting folks to speak, I wanted to give a little background about this, the process and why this has come about. So I think and hope that folks are aware that most of our license holders do a great job, they're very responsible, and that is very much appreciated. Nonetheless, we have seen that some issues come up from time to time that necessitate improvement in the system, and our goals in this are two major goals. So one is the clarification of the due process for all parties involved. We've noted that that is an improvement that's needed, and it offers better protection to all the parties as what's being presented here. It's a multi-step and multi-party process, and I want to remind folks that, again, because we have generally really good license holders, the first step is internal and it never rises to the level of city involvement, and again, we appreciate that. However, if it does rise up from that and come to our attention in terms of needing to have city involvement, so the first would be a warning, potentially if merited, then come before council for hearing where the owner has a chance to explain what's going on and what they've done to mitigate whatever that issue is. If the council decides that's great, end of story, or it continues on through district court. So again, that there's multiple points at which licensed owners can explain what they're doing and mitigating the issue, which I think is really important for that. The second part is it gives a opportunity for more proactive management to help preclude problems from happening, so making things like tips training through Lander PD available on demand and free, and helping better identify what issues are out there so we can continue to make this better. There's also a very real impact on public safety, which Interim Chief Waugh will speak to a little bit after I give this information as well. Also want to let folks know that process has happened to date, so it's very iterative. In starting this, we looked at current ordinances from other Wyoming municipalities, took several of those into consideration, had several internal meetings, myself, Interim Chief Waugh, our legal guidance through Adam, Rochelle, our clerk who manages these, Councilmember Stubble's also been part of these. We've had conversations with some of our license holders, we've had two work sessions as council with the demerit system and the due process system. Tonight, obviously, is our first public hearing, and we welcome that, and this is the first reading of three readings. While readings can by state statute be done from first to third in 10 days, we do not want to do that, especially with a topic like this that is of keen importance to folks. So our intent is to spread it out through meetings, and so we welcome your public comment, and we're glad folks are here for that. Please understand in public comment that it's your chance to share your thoughts and concerns with council. We don't respond during public comment, so we will have our conversation when it's the agenda topic, so if you're able to stay for that in person, that would be lovely. If you need to go home, understand you can listen to that conversation via the Zoom platform if you need to be listening and cooking dinner or putting kids to bed or what have that. And also, of course, encourage you to continue to stay in touch with direct conversations, emails with us, that is very much appreciated. Also a reminder that there is an open house for more in-depth Q and A. Interim Chief Waugh will be hosting that here Thursday, six to eight, and that is an option as well for continuing information. So before we open up for a public comment, Interim Chief Waugh, if you want to speak a little bit about the correlation of alcohol and public safety.
Mayor, council, if you remember, this all started a year ago when we talked about renewal of liquor licenses, and there was no transparency in the progress, process, there, there was no guidelines, there was really nothing put in place. So that was ultimately where this started, was our intent to put a process in place where we had regulations and guidelines of how to operate, what we can do, what we can't do. I'm involved, obviously, for the safety factor, as that's my role in the community. It's important for people to know that over eighty, eighty percent of reported crime right now in Wyoming involves alcohol. And I think us as administrators for the city, but us as citizens that live in our community have a due diligence to put our best foot forward, to make our community as safe as we possibly can, and if you look at the work that's been put into this, I've had a little bit to do with it, I would tell you that I feel like Rochelle and Ray Jean have probably done way more work than me, but we've researched other communities, we've researched their demerit systems, what this looks like. We've had input from other council members outside of Councilwoman Stubble in regards to, is it demerit, or is it demerit and a fine, et cetera? I'll have you know, I looked through today, from 2018 through today, just in our alcohol and tobacco compliance, there was eighteen violations from 2018 until today. Only three of the business owners would have gone past the very first step, which is, we know is internal. Only two of the three are still current and owned by the same people. I've been very vocal that I will do whatever I can do to provide safety, to provide training. I have three certified tips trainers that we will put to you whenever you need them, whether it's forty people or one person. I know there's some concern about the thirty day limit, that's fine, we'll provide them whenever we want, but I've also been vocal that I'll have open houses, as many as we need, for people to understand why we're doing what we're doing, where we're going, and I think the open conversation is the most important part, to listen to what you think fits, what you see fits, what you don't think fits, and how we amend that appropriately. The safety of our community is of the utmost importance. Councilwoman Cox has stated that we cannot control people who want to abuse substance, I get that, but this is our chance to have a say in if we're helping them safely. We've had, just recently, one of the things we've asked in this is to notify my department when you remove someone from your bar. To me, you're helping other bar owners. If someone's a problem in your bar or establishment, do you want them to move on to the next one? Probably not. Two days ago, a gentleman was removed from one location, ended up at a second location, started problems at a second location, ultimately, we arrest him and he's armed with a firearm. So he was in two of our locations intoxicated and armed. Those are the things we're trying to reduce and get in the middle of in the beginning. So that's my stance on the safety side of it. I mean, there's a number of incidents we can share with you of, if you were required to call or would have let us know. Our intent is not to run right down and take someone to jail because you kicked them out. Our intent is to get within the area, to get them home, to get them safe, so the problem doesn't continue to go on, or further crimes such as domestic violence, rape, a lot of those crimes resolve around overconsumption of alcohol.
Thank you. With that, anyone who would like to offer a public comment, come on up to the microphone up here in the front, know that you need to kind of bend a little close to it so that your audio is good, both for us in the room and anyone who might be online. Rock, paper, scissors for who goes first.
Michelle Motherway, Representative Mr. D's Food Center, 725 Main Street. Thank you, council, for your time, thank you, mayor, for your time. I have four points I'm trying to cover. I emailed all of you and said I have more than three minutes to talk about this, and I'm looking forward to the open house. When I started in the grocery business and managed people, my mother taught me a valuable lesson. She said, if you have a problem with a person, deal with that person, not make the whole system suffer with more rules just to deal with one bad actor. Point number one, we stand united as a group of licensees in this room and do not support suspension of liquor license under the system laid out in this new ordinance. It could possibly be the end of that business, and at minimum, will affect any other employees who will not be working during that time or during the closure. The trickle-down effect punishes so many more people than just the business owner. Point number two, we cannot take away personal responsibility when dealing with the sales of alcohol, the sales and service of alcohol. The licensee ES has the ultimate responsibility, which every person in this room and who has a license takes extremely seriously, but the server or the seller also needs to be held responsible, like in Mr. Vasilopoulos's letter that has been provided for you tonight. He states, "We support the finding of the person to make, the finding of the person that makes the transaction, but not punishing the business or the license holder immediately. We would support with subsequent infractions and showing a pattern, a hefty fine to the license holder, and we believe that that hefty fine would ratify the situation." Again, no suspensions. We train our employees extensively to deal with alcohol, make it on them to follow the rules and to not be fined, and that allows them to remain employed. Mr. D's has a zero tolerance policy. When it comes to a person who sells to a minor, or who sells to someone who is over-served or does something dangerous, they immediately lose their job at Mr. D's. When it comes to, when it comes to the safety and sales of alcohol, taking personal responsibility away is dangerous. Number three, with personal accountability, we live in America, we are free people, we have the freedom to drink alcohol, obviously, safety, safely, not causing a disturbance or driving. If a person is A and O times four, walking, talking, not breaking any law, but intoxicated by your definition, determined by smell, slur, or stumble, what law have they technically broken? I challenge the legality of mandating a private business to call the police every time we encounter a quote, "over-intoxicated" person, unquote. We have a very comprehensive safety plan in place for our guests and our staff to help them all be safe. The government needs to stay out of private commerce and not to add more arbitrary, subjective, and punitive rules. My thought number four, which I think we've kind of worked through tonight. We are not opposed to tips mandates at all. In fact, we encourage some sort of tips or man, T-MAT, which is the test that we use on, on our site, Councilman Han has seen that. But we would like more than thirty days. Employees are hard to find in our tiny little town, and tips training beside, despite what is said is not free. We estimate with all of our employees that we will incur a business expense of approximately $4,000 a year to pay our employees, because we pay the hours that they are trained. We have a no-free-work policy. Mr. Vasilopoulos has stated that he will not hire someone if this is mandated until they have taken the tips training course on their own. I think that getting people employed and paid in our community is very important. This is a population that needs to be paid. As we move forward, we need more transparency involvement with the business owners in this process, please, and I have more concerns and look forward to productive meetings and two-way conversations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Mike Bailey. I purchased the gas station up on the hill a year ago. I was actually sitting here at my approval for that license when you guys discussed the issues a year ago that you talked about. And, and as I stated then, again, we have a, also have a zero tolerance policy, our employees, if they are caught selling to somebody underage, or that's under the influence excessively, they don't have a job anymore. But like Ms. Motherway said, it is very challenging to get employees, and the more stringent some of these rules become, the harder it's going to be. The costs continue to go up, like she said, the cost of tips training, which I think we all are more than willing to do, but again, I would agree that we need a little more time than thirty days. You can't overwhelm your employees at first by over-training them immediately, they get overwhelmed, and a lot of times, they just don't come back. The job market is a very employee-related job market, where they can walk down the street and get another job somewhere else that maybe has less stress, less rules, less whatever. So we would like you to just to appreciate that and give us a little extra time, we're more than willing to change, we're more than willing to enforce our zero tolerance policy a hundred percent. The trick becomes, if that employee does not suffer any consequences for what they do, if it's only on the license holder, then they're free to just go down the street and go to work for Michelle, if I fire one, right? So again, I think we need to make sure they're being held responsible to follow the rules that they're expected to, and we've trained them to, to follow, not just the license holder. Your demerit system, I think, is good. We have to have a way to judge the bad actors in the community, and I think all of the responsible business people that are here tonight would agree that they don't want those people not following the rules either. It makes all of us look bad, it makes, you know. And I've been involved in this industry almost all my life. I live in Riverton, we had a liquor store when I was young, and this is not a problem that's brand new, okay? I've been doing this for close to fifty years, and we had that problem back then, and we're going to have it fifty years from now, as long as there's substances that people are willing to abuse and, you know, not follow common sense and the rules. So I would ask you just maybe to lighten this up a little bit. To me, it's a little bit aggressive with how many demerits. You know, at fifteen demerits, you, you could get your license suspended, that's pretty aggressive to me, so. And I would say we need to make sure we keep the employee that actually makes the mistake responsible. The license holder, I think you will find, it's our livelihood, so we're willing to back those things up, but just to punish us, I don't know that that's fair. And I guess I have a little problem with a law that says I have to call the police, I don't really get a lot of judgment in that if somebody's over-served, let's say. Do you send them home and they go walk home? I don't know. I, I get the chief's point about what could happen, but if we've had three incidences in the last seven years that actually involve that, that's not too bad. So I, I think we could just lighten it up to where we're not constantly on the hook for our license being pulled over some employee. I love my employees, I think they do a good job and they try, but none of them are perfect as with the rest of us. And so, you know, after one mistake, they've got some pretty serious consequences coming there, so for us to lose a license after one mistake in, in a twenty-four month period, that's, that's a pretty high standard, so. And a lot of it's beyond our control. We had a incident where a guy walked into our store, grabbed the bottle of liquor, walked out the door, gun in his bicep, and rode away. Obviously, he probably was intoxicated, he was going to be more intoxicated. We called the PD, they jumped right on it, they caught the guy, he hadn't even cracked the bottle open, we got our bottle of liquor back, and everything was good. So, you know, we appreciate what PD has to deal with, and we all want to be safer, and we want people to be responsible for their own actions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm here for the Maverick. Good evening, and I don't talk very well, my voice. I agree that the point system is pretty tough for the bar owners. I'm a manager for the Maverick, and I'm just going to say Abe doesn't really want anything to do with the bar, just so that I run it according to the laws. I've been a bartender since 1981. I've tried to follow the state statutes, not the city local, unless they're stronger than the state, because I don't want, I don't want anybody bending any rules. Everyone in my bar has to do tips training. I don't think the tips training in Wyoming is very good, I'm just going to move that right off the bat. I'm taking one online that is fantastic, thirty-eight bucks, I'm paying for it, and all my bartenders are going to pay for that same tips course, because I've taken the one offered here, it's not very good, in my opinion. I think our bartenders need to know more about laws and less about beating people. I don't, I work under the understanding through Abe that if myself or one of the bartenders don't card people for cigarettes, gaming, booze, we suffer the consequences, he does not, because he's at home and he's not there to see what's going on. So I don't agree with the people losing their license over the bartender not doing their job. I'm pretty tough on all my bartenders, and I hear about it all the time, but I don't want, I don't want anybody over-drinking in our bar. Does it happen? Yes, it does. Someone can come in, they act perfectly normal, we serve them a drink, maybe two, and they're totally hammered, because we don't know what they had to drink before they came to our bar. I don't think that means we should call the police, we should just send them home. I don't think that means they're a troublemaker. And I think that for the Maverick, I feel like we have to call too often, because people from other bars come in and they're irritated and they start a fight, and I'm not going to get hurt, so I'm going to call my police officer because he's there to help them. I wish we didn't have that going on, I wish we had people that came in and had a few drinks, had a good time, danced a lot, and left on their own, but it doesn't always work out that way. And every time the police have told me that I needed to shut the bar down, I was proactive and was already on, because I'm not, if we have more than two fights a night, I'm done, I don't want to deal with it anymore, it just means the moon's full and the creeps are out, in my opinion. I'm just going to make a couple of statements that Abe asked me to make, they're not necessarily my opinion, but he wanted to make. We are a small town, we are having problems finding employees all the time, every business, so we need to take that into consideration when we're passing laws and making jobs harder to be there because of the stress level and the laws are so tight that you can't make a mistake. And I agree, it takes a lot of money to train a person and get them, nobody learns everything overnight. I was, I started bartending in Reno, Nevada, where we had to go to union and take classes. They don't make you do that here, you don't have to go to school to be a bartender or waitress, but we had to in Reno, Nevada. What's his other comment? I already made the one comment that Abe wanted me to make, but I'm going to make it again. He feels that when we're calling the PD all the time, to get them aware of someone we just kicked out, we're wasting their time as well as on trivial calls. I kick people out all the time for just being rude to women, because I feel like I want my women to be safe in the bar where I work. I can't read my notes, so I'm done, but, and I think the point system, it's, it's too easy for a bar to lose their license on the current point system you have in place, and that wouldn't be fair to the bar owner or the bar manager, because I'm trying to keep everybody doing it. We, I've been at the Maverick for almost ten years, and we've only failed one sting that wasn't done right, and the guy forgave us for it, and that was a cigarette sting, it was not an alcohol sting, we have not failed one alcohol sting, because I tell everybody, you have to card them if you don't know who they are. I don't care if they're seventy-seven, that's the law, and so my bartenders follow that rule. The cigarette sting, the way they did it, they sent someone in, he asked if we had change for twenty bucks, we said no, they walked off. She never carded him because he didn't ask about the cigarette machine, he just asked if we could have, had change for twenty bucks. And she was brand new that day, she didn't know she couldn't give someone change in a bar, so I think that says a lot for trying to run a pretty tight ship and try to maintain our type of business within the laws that are around us, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Ron Hanson, I'm owner of the One Stop Market and Wind River Outdoor Company. I got to admit, this thing kind of came out of left field to me. I really didn't know, in fact, I didn't know anything about it till three weeks ago when Michelle Motherway called. I, I almost wonder if you maybe have the cart before the horse here. It would seem that the proper course of action, if you have a problem with retail establishments, is to go to the retail establishments first and find a path in which we can all accomplish the goals that, that are set forth, rather than kind of putting us on a defensive edge right out of the gate. I'm going to echo a lot of the same comments that, that other people have made, Mr. Bailey and Mrs. Motherway, Ms. Motherway. I'm going to echo a lot of the same comments that, that other people have made, Mr. Bailey and Mrs. Motherway, Ms. Motherway. It seems to me that we have one retail establishment that has brought this to the light. And maybe I'm speaking out of line. Again, as I'm late to the game here and I'm not making excuses for it. But it seems like all of us are being asked to solve the issue where one was the cause of. And I got to admit, that's a little sour. In my business, you know, it's mandatory tips training for everybody. And like Michelle is, we pay everybody to go. It's not easy to get classes lined up because they're all over the state, but it, but it's gotten better that we can get classes within an hour or two here and send people to go. But we pay the time, we pay the class and we generally pay for the classes through our annual renewal fees with the Wyoming State Liquor Association. We also have extensive training in-house and we have no less than, I have four age certification statements that I go through my staff with. So it's tobacco, it's alcohol on Wind River side of things and there's lottery. There's game and fish. There's firearms and ammunition. And so we take this age thing very seriously. But we're kind of getting, it seems to me we're getting backed into a corner here because now I'm going to be held responsible for the actions of an independent third party. Now, I take great pride in running my business to the highest standards I possibly can, but I can't be there 24/7. Nobody can. Nobody here, nor can you guys. And yet I'm being asked to take the arrows, so to speak, of somebody that might have ill intent on my business. And I'll give you an example of that. I had an employee within the past couple of months that did not like how I handled the situation with an unruly customer. It wasn't liquor related. They made scenes, they made accusations to other employees, they made a threat to another employee. And I asked that individual to leave. Had a staff member that did not like that, how I handled that, asking them to leave. And it was done with. You need to go think about what you've done. You need to apologize to the people that you called out and then you need to come back to me before I will let you in my establishment. That staff member did not like me calling that person out. And subsequently was taped tampering with our security system and our POS system. And it ended up taking our POS system down for about two and a half hours in August. So that's a big monetary hit. What I'm afraid of is you get that same individual with ill intent because there's no ramifications to them. It's just to the business owner. And I'm being held hostage to somebody with ill intent. And then it steamrolls and it affects not only myself, but my other employees, people I do business with, my representatives, brands that are selling me stuff. It affects banking relationships. I mean, I mean, we all have bank loans. Does a bank want to loan money to a business potentially that could have its employees dictate if that business stays in business or not? It seems like it's a bit of an overstretch. I fully support public safety with the police and having responsible liquor serving or rules. But it seems like revocation or suspension of a license is a bridge too far for me. Because there's not one business here, if you take this license away, not one, and I'm going to say this unequivocally, none of them will survive. Lander, Wyoming is very cyclical on economic conditions. So from January to July, my business is a 400% difference in business. I need that liquor license to keep the lights on during the winter months. And it pads the bills in the summer months. If I don't have that liquor license, if it's suspended, my business is done. And it's not just the one stop because I'm under one umbrella. It's all my businesses immediately. Talk to Kyle Vassalopoulos and I think you all have a letter. He's of the same, I mean, he's done. There's not one hospitality business here that would survive without a liquor license. I fully support good laws that are followed through, proper training. But I agree with Mr. Bailey is you have to hold the person at the point of contact responsible as well. And if the business owners then don't take action, I think a monetary fee gets everything that you guys want and then some without collapsing the economics behind it. Because Lander's a tough place to do business. It's been very tough the last 18 months. There was a glimmer of hope in July and August, but we're, I think I can say with a lot of certainty because I can drive up and down Main Street and see what's going on and I have a lot of business contacts in town is everybody's hurting. And this is just another way that we put a brick on the business community in Lander. And because it's not just going to be the liquor establishments, it's going to be staff members. If a license is suspended or revoked, it's other staff members and their families. It's going to be other distributors. So if Budweiser can't sell beer to me, you would think it'd be a fungible. But that impacts their business that now they're, they're having to come. They have dated product, they've got to rotate out, they've got to move things around. You have banking relationships. You have loss of, you know, business credibility because that is a real thing. Because it'll be all over the newspaper and the little old lady down the street all of a sudden thinks you're the evil guy. And when you're working your tail off to not be that. So I think you, you, obviously you have an issue and it sounds to be a valid issue by what the chief of police is saying. But trying to stuff everybody else into that box, I think, I think there's a better way of doing it. And honestly, I wish the council would have asked the input of retailers as a whole group and had a working group to solve through, gone through this before we're here today. I think that would have been the logical step and I think it would have been the respectful step. Because it's, this is our livelihoods. And that means something to me. I hope it means something to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments online or that have been submitted? Doesn't, doesn't seem like it. Did you want to read what Ms. Groom Smith?
I did get an email from Tana Groom Smith. She indicated she might appear online. She was going to be here in person, but ended up not feeling well. So she sent me an email and she had started to review some of the materials, pointing out that there was a definition in E that wasn't finished, wondering in the definition of bar and grill if there should be an operational kitchen included with that definition. Wondering if a clerk should also keep a record of contact information with license holders as they fill out applications, their address, their phone number and their email, which is part of the license application itself. She wondered what in 214 CB, the purpose of this file should not be carried out by the issuance, renewal or transfer of the liquor license print means. Not really sure about that. But G, completion of an approved alcohol server training course by server employees within 30 days of hire. She pointed out at this time, RBSTs are scheduled every other month and servers can access online trains at a cost. Prevention program offers an in-class training for free. So she may not have known about the police department's training that's getting up and running. 215, she pointed out that there is a missing word in shall be paid in full. Comply with training and records maintenance requirements in E, and I'm not sure where that E is. What records maintenance and requirements are those? She wanted the language of public responsibility. No person shall consume or carry in open containers alcoholic liquor or malt beverages inside or outside any motor vehicles on any street or highway, in any restaurant, hotel, dining room, or any other public place whatsoever within the city, except places where the sale or service of alcoholic liquor or malt beverages is authorized by the eight, and I'm not sure what that means, what eight Wyoming statute law or city ordinance as permitted by catering or malt beverage permit or open container permit be issued pursuant to this title. So she wanted some sort of change under public responsibility. And then she also inquired about the lawful request that is unlawful to remain in an establishment operated under a liquor license after a lawful request has been made by an agent, employer or owner of the establishment. She wondered what a lawful request constituted.
Great, thank you.
The other only information that I had as feedback and came through Kevin was there was an inquiry about if bar and grill license and restaurant licenses are required to have some sort of documentation above and beyond the gross sales. You know, there was a concern that perhaps that would become a public records, subject to public records and could something else suffice for that piece?
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing at 6:41. And next up is a public hearing ordinance 202514 amending section 710, oh, 7101 through 7106 tobacco products, age requirements within the city of Lander. So we'll open that at 6:42, open the hearing. And sorry, I over stepped before being the one reading. It should probably be either Rochelle or interim chief for this, or at the very least explaining it.
Madam Mayor, I'll take it. It's pretty simple, pretty clear cut. Wyoming state statute changed several years back that the age to purchase and possess is 21 years old. Our current ordinance in the city of Lander is still at 18. So this is a small change that our ordinance matches state statute. We can be more restrictive, but not less.
Thank you. So that, anyone from the audience want to speak?
Good evening, Council. Karen Watson. I don't know that this is the right time to speak of this, but I believe that the city of Lander, likely under the Home Rule, authority can ban the use of kratom in the city. I don't know if you all have heard about what's going on there, but there's been a lot of deaths from that and maybe this would work in with that ordinance. I'm not sure.
Sadly, it does not, but that is something we are aware of and want to look to address.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close that at 6:43. Next up, communication from the floor. Please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded. All comments in this section are limited to three minutes. So if anyone wants to come up, come on up. Okay, not seeing any motion towards that. So I'll move to Mayor and Council update, starting with you, Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things here that I wanted to update the council and the public on. Alls I got to do is find it. Okay. The Fremont County Solid Waste District is planning on officially closing the Lander landfill in July of 2028. And so we've got a two, three years down the road here that we're looking at that. The transfer station will be open by then and most citizens will be unloading there at the transfer station at the present landfill. While the commercial haulers will be hauling directly to the Sandra landfill. Right now, the Sandra landfill has capacity into the 2060s. And if, I know that I won't be alive then, but for those that are, you don't need to sweat it because there's still another ample amount of property there to do another landfill in the, in the same vicinity as the Sandra landfill. The Senior Center had their Wimpy Burger fundraiser here this, this last Saturday. For all those that were able to partake and attend there, that was, it was a great fundraiser for the, for the senior city, senior center. There were 450 tickets that were sold. That's a lot of, that's a lot of big hamburgers, you know, and it was, it was a fun, a fun activity. So Mayor, I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. 450. That is amazing. Yeah. Councilmember Cassidy.
Mayor, council staff, due to travel, nothing to report this period.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan Hong.
Yes, Mayor. Wanted to, I wanted to give everybody my comment on, on the Title II and kind of my, my, my vision of how things have taken place. Last year, we had a liquor license holder end up almost being denied. I had no information on this to make a sound decision. And I did not want to vote against a license holder with basically no information. And as a council member, you need to be informed and I didn't feel I was, not in this situation. So I, my comment, and I brought this to City Hall, I wanted to, to find a simple way to let the council know if there was a problem with the liquor license holder so we could make a sound decision if this happens again. And I also wanted to include the business owners. Now, in my mind, and we've, we've discussed this for, for a while. In my mind, we already have the laws and regulations. We have both state and federal guidelines we follow. And also in my, my mind, we really haven't had any problems in the past 19 years that, that I've been on council. We, it's been, it was actually, for me, it was a surprise because I was literally caught off guard because it is such a standard, a thing to get at the end of the year. We have little problems, but we don't have big problems. Nothing that warrants, I think, what we have in front of us. And I, to tell you the truth, I, I was, I wanted to, it scared me for the, for the holder as well as it was for me. I didn't have the information and for me, everything came, came too quick. I find out about it, next thing we're, we're, we're talking the chopping block. And I, I thought, you know, that was, that was, that was a little crazy. But anyway, originally I thought this was a language problem and we needed a little more language to solve the original, the original Title II that we have. I was looking for a little. I think that, you know, what I saw the other day, I was a little, I was a little blown away, but I looked at it and I thought, okay. You know, this looks good to me. But when you go out and you start talking to business people, which I did, I've spent three days talking to business people and listening to their concerns and, you know, all the different little things that they have and how serious this is. I really, I mean, I've gained, I've, I've really learned a lot this week. And for me, I originally thought it was a language, it was a language situation. And I'm not thinking that, I'm not thinking that now. What I'm thinking is, in my mind, it was a communication problem with, you know, us, us up here. Because there were certain people that knew things and I didn't know things and to, to have to make a decision with, and I knew there were people that had, they knew things that I didn't have. knew things that I didn't have. And so for me, I think we had a communication breakdown, and for me, I couldn't, I couldn't do my job as a councilperson because of the communication situation. I think if, I think if, and to tell you the truth, I think if I would have had all the information that some people had, we might not even, I might not even be talking about this tonight, because we, there could have been a different situation that happened way back when, but it didn't, and now we're here. And I think the thing that, I think the thing that bothers me is, is, you know, we've jumped into this like we jump into a lot of things, and we're steamrolling forward, and, you know, I don't like that. I don't, I don't like that. Just because you jump in, I think you can jump back out, to tell you the truth. I think that, I think, I think that what we have, I think, does exactly what we need, and I don't think we need to, to, I don't think we need to throw in the additions, because I told everybody before that we have great business people here. Everybody's trying, they always have, we haven't had a problem, and all of a sudden we have one problem, and we go from, we go from zero to 200 miles an hour. And I don't, I don't think this is right. And the other thing is, is I've heard, you know, I've heard that, that, you know, we have to get this done, we have to get it done, we got to push, the big push is to get this done by the first of the year. To me, that's totally insane. For one thing, we as a, as a council, at any moment, the way I read this, we can, if a liquor license holder screws up at any time, we can pull them in and we can start things rolling on what we're going to do. We can, we can, we can, we can get information, and if there's a problem, we can do something about it. So as far as I'm concerned, this is not about rushing a document to meet a deadline. You know, if we're going to choose to go forward with this, this is about making sure that we have the right document that works for everybody, the council, City Hall, and our, and our business family. Because I tell you what, our big, our business community is, and we talk about it all the time, it's economic development. You know, we have to protect our economic development. These people out here, they have hundreds of employees, and even though it sounds, you know, great to build these monstrous, you know, pieces of paper to, and we're all trying to protect people, but in my mind, I think we're, I don't think it's needed. I think, personally, I think we scared the hell out of a lot of business people, because all they can see is just, you know, flashing lights. And if they've been good and we haven't had a problem, I don't think we need to go down that road. And honestly, I, you know, that's, that's, that's my comment for the evening. I think we have great people, I think we have great businesses, I think that we have everything. This document right here has everything we need, and anytime you get a lot of, and I appreciate all the work that everybody's done. I'm, I'm, I'm the guy that said, I think we need something, but now I'm the guy that's saying that I don't, I really don't think we do. I think we have everything, and I think, I think it's simple enough that everybody can read it, and I think if we go too far, we're going to complicate things, and I think we're actually going to, we're going to, I think we're going to open ourselves up for problems, because I think there's way too much language in what we, what we wrote, and I don't think it's needed. So anyway, that, that's, that's all I have to say. This is very, you know, I'm very concerned here, just like they are, and I've spent a lot of time talking to people, and, and, you know, I don't want people, you know, getting away with anything or breaking the law or any of that. I think these people are solid people that do the best they can every day, and bottom line is, if something radical happened, you know, they, it would be. And to tell you the truth, all you do is, I'm sure what happened to Warland, but go to Warland, there's no, there's nothing there. I mean, there's no business for whatever the reason is. But anyway, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of updates on liaison positions, the Community Service Block Grant. You know, they, there's been some changes, and they're susceptible to federal dollars. For those of you in the audience that don't know, the CSBG is under, essentially under WRTA, which is kind of an interesting dynamic, but it's actually under FCEG, really, which is the Fremont County Association of Governments. So there's a dual relationship there. The CSBG provides funds to help community members get out of poverty, essentially, and they went to a case management model versus a third-party funding stream. There was some concern about that initially, but right now, it's really working well, and they're serving a lot of community members and resolving that long-term getting out of poverty versus short-term fixes. The problem now exists is that because they receive federal dollars, they're waiting for some drawdown funding. The reason I bring this up now is, I don't know if FCEG has a backup plan, if and when they were not to be funded, so we've, as a board, have kind of resolved some imminent issues and how we disseminate funds. And I know there's, I believe there's a meeting, is there a meeting coming up, FCEG meeting? Or was that last week?
There was one last week.
It was last week. So then a month from now, essentially, will be a new one? Okay, I might be able to attend that and see what we can, what we can do if they don't receive funds. LIDA continues to move along, they're progressing as far as getting some new members and new blood and having, having some more interest. The Chamber of Commerce, there's been some discussion, as everybody is aware, about some building code issues and permitting. They would like to have a meeting, I'm guessing they've reached out.
Scheduled, we're scheduling.
We have scheduled it?
We're, we're in the process of scheduling.
Okay, I know that they mentioned that Councilman Cassidy and myself and Mayor, so anyway, that should be moving forward as our discussions continue. I want to draw attention to conversation about TIPS training, just really quick, as we, we use that acronym pretty freely, but to understand that, that TIPS training is a training to, it's training and intervention, essentially, so that people who are serving understand how to deal with issues, so how you deal with making sure you card, how you deal with an unruly customer who might be overserved, how you, because a lot of times, I don't know if any of you have gone to a bar, but there might be a single bartender, and there's a lot of patrons there. And so how do you then de-escalate somebody? It's a very tricky tool, that you de-escalate somebody so they can exit your premises so that nobody's injured. So this all started 20-plus years ago in Wyoming. Fremont County Prevention brought it to our county. I would say over, as I was recalling, Tonnage Grim Smith was probably initially involved in all of that, I'm guessing. And that came a long time ago, and, and the reason you have tips is so that you can intervene so that people don't drink and drive, so you're, you're essentially trying to ward off any of those things to happen, that you card so you don't serve people that are underage, and then that you can, you know how to deal with somebody who's intoxicated and not following, not following the rules. So there's a lot of, that stuff has been going on for quite some time, and it's an effective way to initially start the conversation. We also provide TIPS training in college campuses, we provide them to students, so that you're made more aware of how, how to recognize those problems. So it's really great that that's part of, and that I hear establishments, because I know the establishments that are here today have been a part of that conversation for years about providing TIPS training. So anyway, just some background. And then also, I want to address at some point, or whether this is putting this on the agenda, or at least having a discussion in a work session, is how we set our agenda. So when we talk today about Title II, one of my questions is, what are the outcomes that the city of Lander is looking for in changing this title? And what is the overall impact to not only the city, but also to our constituents and our business owners? So understanding that agenda setting, I think, sometimes is not super clear for councilmembers, I know we've, we've talked about that, so that when we're addressing policy, which we're going to be addressing two big ones tonight, that we have a better, you know, construct and procedure about how we deal with these things, so that people can be made aware, and we're not doing what, what essentially we've created here, and that is, you know, having these conversations after, not after the fact, it has not been approved. There's a three, you know, three readings. I'm looking forward to continued conversation, but I do think that our establishments need to be involved in that. Our community needs to be involved in these conversations at an earlier stage. So, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stubble.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first start with saying thank you for those of you who attended tonight and spoke to us, give us your feedback, those who are listening and maybe gave feedback, you know, in writing or have yet to do so. I know there's some business owners out there who are working at their establishments right now, and that we'll need to make contact with, you know, as we go through this process. But your input tonight, we provided in the past, and they continue to provide, it's really important to us. We're, you know, at version 1.0 on this Title II proposal, and together with the information you have, the expertise you have on operations that I definitely don't have, we need to meld that together to get to a place where we can, you know, meet the intentionality and the goals we have of community safety, which I know we all share, and make sure we create something that is still workable, you know, for you and for your businesses. So keep coming, please come on Thursday. We'll go through, continue debate, and I hope refinement, while we incorporate some of the ideas that you've presented. So thanks for tonight, thanks for the time you're going to put into this in coming days and weeks as well. There's one point there I wanted to name, and Councilman Cox, you hit on it there too, I think. Mr. Hanson, you brought up, I can see your point about a different process would have been an early conversation about, here's a problem, help us create a proposal to develop it, and I see your reasoning on that, too. The reasoning that we went with was sometimes having a proposal in hand to respond to can help clarify and engender participation. I don't know if there's a right answer on one of the both of those, but it certainly wasn't intended to be disrespectful to go, you know, the direction we went tonight with proposals first, and then incorporate your input. So I'm sorry if that did feel that way, that we felt disrespectful to the community, it's not what we, we meant to do. So I just want to say again, thanks, keep coming, keep bringing your ideas, send them in in writing, send them in in person, and look forward to that conversation and debate as we go. As a liaison, just some quick updates, the tree board met last week, and I shared with them our, our vote on passing the updated ordinance. We spoke about, so implementation now, how do we continue to share information with homeowners, property owners about the benefits of hiring licensed arborists versus unlicensed arborists? How do the city keep sharing information through the coming year to folks who want to work in the city, and what that entails for, you know, getting certification as an arborist and licensing? The group is also really weighing in on probably what they love best, instead of ordinances and licenses, and that's tree species that thrive here in town. And so we have some vacant spots, some dead trees or removed trees on Main Street, and I think we all can agree that where we have those thriving trees, it really adds to the sense of community and setting we have. But there's a few blank spots from death or accident, or, or I don't know what all. So the board is weighing in on the species, it might be a good fit for a Main Street setting, but also not create too much litter, or grow too high, or impede the traffic. So glad to have those experts helping inform us on that, and informing the Parks Department on those choices. The Energy and Environment Group is busy problem solving on some topics that I've brought up before, but learning more information and looking at solutions for cost savings and energy efficiency at the golf course relative to the water system up there, and have resubmitted that grant to Rocky Mountain Power for some possible cost savings and energy here at City Hall. So we'll stay tuned if that gets, you know, further progresses, Mayor, and to council attention. So thank you for your attendance, and look forward to the discussion.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hahn.
Yes, I would like to piggyback on her on the, thank you all for showing up tonight, giving us input. I've spoke to a couple of business owners in town, and, and I think you're all in agreeance. This all did stem from a lack of knowledge on a few council members on a situation that came up last year. Not being informed led to bigger and obviously worse things, and I apologize for that. And I would like to say congratulations, and I'm super excited for our Lander Tiger Varsity Football Team making it to state, and they earned the playoff position to play at home on Friday night, so, you know, come cheer on the team, it's pretty fun to watch, thank you.
What, what times the games start?
Six o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Six dollars a person on playoff games to get in.
Money well spent, yeah. All right, for me, a few things. One, you may have noticed in our folder for tonight, there is the strategic plan that was presented back in the spring, and I had asked for us to pause on that until I had a chance to look through our last strategic plan and make sure that everything was mirrored into this one coming forward. So sorry about the long delay in it, it is, so it's in this week, this meeting's Google Drive, so you can review it, so that we can vote on it in our November meeting. So just a chance to review that, and it's, you know, my desire, one, to check it, and then also, it's important for us to agree on that, because that's what provides guidance to our staff in terms of how they manage what they're doing. So we, we set the course, and then they do that. One of the things that we also talked about is, it would be nice to have more updates from staff about, specifically about items on the strategic plan, and the idea of doing twice-a-year updates, likely, say like a March-ish before our budget meeting, and then again in the fall, so we can look forward to that. Another thing I want to work on tackling next, we've talked about it before, is a code of conduct for ourselves for that. This stems in part from Police Department, having their code of conduct, and again, my belief, if we're asking others of our staff to do that, we need to hold ourselves at, similar to that same standard. While we don't have the same level of daily public interaction with that volume of public, we are still public figures, and I think that's important. It's also being requested or expected from more and more entities, so this year in our audit, that's one of the questions that's been asked, is what are code of contacts or code of ethics, both for elected officials as well as city staff? I think it's important for that, and, and I'm sure y'all, like me, see the headlines that seem to be every week, some elected official is acting in bad faith, and, you know, doing bad things to their community. So look for that to be coming as well. Also know folks are curious about the hiring process for the Chief of Police, not a huge amount to relay, their applications closed at the end of September. WASCOP, Wyoming Association of Sheriffs and Chiefs of Police, is doing the first round of that, and we're waiting for the information for them on that, so more to come on that. A reminder again about that Thursday's open house, six o'clock here. Because it is a topic that's ultimately a voting topic, if you want to attend that meeting, please let Rochelle know by noon tomorrow. If more than three of us plan on attending, then we need to make sure it's noted as a special meeting, and that notes are taken and distributed. So we can't have folks just randomly show up and inadvertently be in violation of public meeting laws. I don't know if folks have that planned, so just make it for noon to tomorrow for that. So, yeah, okay, so it'll be a special meeting, thank you, that was quick and easy, great, awesome. So I mentioned before that the, Wham! is revitalizing the Leadership and Training Committee, and I'm serving on that, and look for a survey sometime in the near future about what kinds of trainings, as you think back when you joined council, would have been helpful to you then, are there particular trainings that would be helpful for you now? Because we want to obviously make, you know, create trainings that serve the needs of folks here. Also want to note, kind of along the lines of the CSBG, but the potential for federal dollars for food assistance through the SNAP program may not be renewed by November 1st, and the Care and Share Food Bank is already serving more than they typically do. So if you have the means to be able to help out our Lander neighbors, please consider making a donation to them, that would be lovely. They could use that assistance for that. And likewise, want to reiterate again our appreciation of folks being here and wanting to be engaged in the process about Title II. This is the process that we go through, and it's important that we have this outreach to you. It's why we made the calls, for folks to know that it was coming, to open house, et cetera. We want it to con- We, we want it to, to be a collaborative process for that. With that, we'll move to staff updates. Interim Chief, what do you got?
I have nothing tonight.
You, you will soon. Lance?
Yes, Mayor and Council, just a few different things. Meter project, we have 12 people who haven't responded to that just outright. You know, we've reached out, we've stopped by trying to get them to schedule, and they have not. We're at the stage where we need to let our contractor move on, and so I think that we're going to be issuing notices of disconnect, you know, at this point if we don't hear from them. So if you hear from some citizens that we're at that stage, that's really kind of where we are. We can't get them to say yes, no, maybe, ask questions, or whatever it may be at this point. So, trying our best, that's where we are. We have still about 15 different meters that have install issues, and that's plumbing or things that have been put in the way, people have put tile over their crawl spaces or not accessible. We're trying to figure out what these homeowners, what we do. Our ordinance says that, you know, the meters have to be accessible, but we're trying to figure out solutions on, all right, we have the force account, trying to work through what we can come up with to, to get each one of those resolved. So, we're less than 20, what I expect on the meter project is we'll be letting that contractor move on. They won't want to be paid for those last remaining meters and to go ahead and leave town, and then we'll work on those internally and really close to wrapping up that project. So hoping next month that we're talking about closeout on that and maybe that adjustment, change order for quantity. Trying to button up paving, and so we're getting close to those last good days. Found out 71 is going to stay open maybe through next month. They have paving projects in Riverton, so we're going to piggyback on that and hopefully we see our projects being paved, Lincoln Street as well, trying to figure out how much we can get done on, and keep that 40 and rising day that we need for putting ribbons down. Another thing that we've been working on since getting our tank and pump station project mostly up and going is pressures. We're seeing a lot of outputs as far as stability in the system, trying to reduce those, seeing what the rural waterhouse is doing, so adding potentially pressure tanks and trying to minimize disturbances. But we were having some spikes there for a few days, and I think that that led to us having quite a few water breaks that showed early this year. So, I think we're getting a handle on that, but we're seeing, you know, very worn out pipes. When we get down there, that's a lot of ductile iron pipe that's reacted with bad soil conditions and rubbing on rocks and bad backfill. So, expect we'll see more of that as temperature changes. But happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
I would say, congrats on getting down to a handful of meters, that's truly remarkable. And I know we've talked about before that for folks, we've talked about that there's a lovely app that goes with this, and we didn't want to roll it out until we were through this part because we get it, you know, need to focus on that first. But when, when we're finally done, we'll roll that out and have information about how to, how to be able to see real time what's happening in your house, which is really, really neat for that. Yeah. Other questions for Lance?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, the update on the, the water main breaks. I've, I've been wondering, you know, how come we're getting them this early in the year? And that makes perfect sense, what you're saying with the, with the pressure spikes. And I guess it's also a, a blessing in disguise, and it's a lot nicer to be repairing those this time of year than it is when it's 15, 20 below, you know, in the middle of December, January. So, good job on that, thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll get a little bit more detailed if you want it. When we go from a tank that offers some, you know, kind of that constant feed in the system and stability to valves, we have eliminated two tanks out of the system, those valves are two different sized pipes, a smaller one and a bigger one, and they open and close based on demand. And one of the effects that we're seeing is that bulk fill station coming on as fast as it does, it's pulling on that valve upstream, and there's a little bit of lag and a little bit of hammer going on. And so trying to, you know, add pressure tanks or reduce that issue so that the valves are coming on smoothly and not causing issues, and our customers aren't seeing it in their showers fluctuate. So, you know, some of it's going to mechanical devices doing things and then getting them to communicate, and their settings is opening and closing speeds that help with that as well. So, a water system's pretty complicated to get it to serve all over town, especially one like Lander where there's huge pressure differences from one end to the other. We're barely serving water at a high enough pressure up on Fremont Street, but that pressure gets over 120 down by the sewer ponds.
Well, I, I know that on our fire line for our sprinkler downstairs in the office, that we're showing 150 pounds on that one right now.
Yeah, and so we recommend individual devices to lower pressure. So if people talk to you about that, it's always good to, 100 or less is what, you know, is good in a household and a lot of those appliances, but, you know, it is a blessing to not have pumps in our system, but also means we're managing pressure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stubble.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Lance. The 12 meters where there's been no contact, can you remind us, that's out of 3,300, is that right?
Correct.
Pretty good ratio. So thanks to everybody who was cooperative and switched over. I, tell us about the process. It's about, been about a year of trying to make contacts. How many contacts did we attempt? Do we know of those 12? How many are, are folks have residents in those buildings or are they vacant? What else can you tell us?
So there's people in all of these buildings. Our contract required five different contacts by the contractor before they could come to us and, and ask for additional assistance. So they had to prove that there were those five different, whether it was a door knocker, a phone call, you know, however they chose to make those contacts, we wanted to see them. Once we took them in, Danielle made phone calls, we went through trying to call the numbers that we had, we actually looked up in the police directory numbers if we had them for them. We've been to the house several times knocking on the door. We went out and started kind of looking for curb stops and painting, and some of those people magically came out of their house. So, you know, some people I think were just not wanting to, to get, you know, in contact with anybody at that point. Some people thought this was a gimmick, and so they just wanted to hear from the city of Lander, make sure it wasn't a scam. And so, you know, there are people that we've reached out with, with text or people that we've known, so a lot of in-person contact. These are the last ones that are like, just not, not answering, or we have gotten contact, they haven't scheduled.
Thank you, sounds extensive. Appreciate that detail.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anything else? Okay. Regine?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have one project update. The Jefferson Street extension into the Propoja River Park will have a pre-bid meeting this week, and bid opening will be November 12th. Since that's the date of your next council meeting, we won't be awarding at that because you won't be able to make sure all the documents in order, but your December meeting, you'll probably have a vote to award the Jefferson Street extension into the park. Unless you have questions, that's all I have. Any questions? Okay, Shari.
Tomorrow we will be advertising my job. WAM has started a new program that they want to help small communities do their accounting and have asked me to develop that and do that for them. So I will be retiring from here and going to work for WAM to do accounting from home.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, it, super psyched for you and so sad for us. I know I've said that to you in, in private, but, but y'all in the audience, Shari is absolutely amazing. We are incredibly indebted to all of her, her service and keeping us in line and, and helping us be fiscally responsible for many, many years. Anything for Shari? Okay, Adam?
I don't have anything tonight unless somebody has questions for me.
And Rochelle?
I would like to touch base with the council about some meeting dates. Mayor White asked me to go over them with you. Our next regular voting meeting, the second Tuesday of November falls on Veterans Day. So the thought was to move that to the 12th, and it would be a special meeting because it would be on a Wednesday and not a second Tuesday. The other next dates on November 25th and December 23rd, because the 25th is the week of Thanksgiving and December 23rd gets into the holidays. Does council want to hold them on those dates, or would they like to shift them to other dates? Just trying to get a feel for what you would prefer.
Yeah. Maybe, meeting by meetings, does November 12th work for everybody? Wednesday, yeah. Okay, great. How about November 25th, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, is that problematic for folks? Or would you be able to attend either in person or Zoom? Does it? Okay, seems like that one's okay. Great. And so the next one would be Christmas Eve Eve. So the December 23rd, how does that look for folks? Are you able, does that cause conflict for folks, either attending in person or via Zoom?
Mayor, I'd like to go earlier on that one, I think. It's a big week with family.
Yeah, it's true, yeah, a lot of family time. So we could either, I think we talked about going on the 16th, or we could go later in that week. Either way, it's going to be a special meeting and not meet right before Christmas time. Preference on that? November would, uh, do we have a special meeting on the 25th?
You were thinking of calling one, Madam Mayor, for another vote on the ordinances that are up.
Oh, correct, yeah. So there may, may be a special on the 25th.
Or the 18th of Thursday worked for people, or?
Okay.
16.
Okay. That's correct.
But it will be a special meeting because it's not on a second or a fourth.
Yeah.
So, there'll be all that email, call and things of that nature. And I'll call the journal and let them know.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, unfinished business. So, next one up is approved second reading of ordinance 2025-11, rezoning Propoja River Park addition from R3 single and multifamily residential district to PL Public Land. I think we had this before, any questions for Regine? Good, motion in a second for this one?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox. See no questions, we'll call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And motion passes. Next up is actually approved resolution 1370, adopting the City of Lander Police Department Policy and Procedure Manual. But first we would need to move to untable this so that we can then move to approve. So first looking for a move to untable.
Moved untable.
And a second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Dan Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Josh Hahn. Any discussion about moving to untable? Can we go straight to the vote? Start with Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
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 Okay, now we can move to approve the resolution. I get a motion in a second for that.
So moved.
Second. Then moved by Councilmember Dan Hahn and seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Any questions, discussion on this?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I'd just like to reflect that I had a lengthy conversation with interim chief Waugh, and I appreciated his time. There's still a couple of areas of concern that I have, so I'll draw your attention to page 126, which would be 126 of the document, not of the agenda packet. And that states it's a Connecticut general statute that defines controlled substance. My question is, can we update that or modify the document to include the Wyoming State statute that defines controlled substance? And I think the Wyoming State statute is on or around Wyoming statute 3571016. That would be my first question. The next point of discussion that I have is there's a, a series of pages which I'll rattle off and certainly don't anticipate you following, but I'll rattle them off. Page six, page 11, page 12, page 45, page 46, page 65, page 73, page 74, page 97, page 155, page 162, page 257, I'll stop there, has a reference to general order and a number to the general order. In one of our policies, it, it defines what a general order is, which is well-defined and written well, but in this document, it just references specific numbers of general order, and we don't have those in our policy and procedure. So I would want those to be removed. The, the number reflecting, I'm comfortable with the general order language, but just not reference a number that doesn't exist. Particular attention to page 268. This section is, it, it, I don't have it pulled up right here in front of me, but the section is about medical and psychological documentation and where those reports are held within a document. And it says in section 5.3, and I don't believe we have that section, so it'd be nice if that, if that was removed from the language so that that would reflect what our policy and procedure actually is. I would also like to thank the interim chief for removing some language about homelessness in reference to mental illness. He and I spoke about that today. I would, I would also like it to, in some capacity, there's an ability for, with, with an executive order from the Trump administration, that there's an ability to detain both mental illness and homelessness vagrants, if you will, and place them in essentially, how do I, I can't remember the language it's used. Anyways, it's in the executive order. We don't have those resources in Wyoming, and then, so just making sure that we're aware of what that, what that executive order says. And then, my other things that were answered, don't need to draw attention to, but we don't currently have a public information officer. And what I talked to Chief Waugh about today is if that's something that the council needs to fiscally be responsible for acknowledging, that that might be an additional duty within the police department, that might come before our attention at a later time. And other than that, I, there's a lot of, again, I want to pay attention to the things that were adjusted as, as part of some of my concerns last, at our last meeting, that Chief Waugh has addressed, and that was in this, if, if our deputies or our officers are subject to drug testing, that there was a panel listed within the drug testing policy, and that panel was missing a couple of pretty important substances, and those have been added to the new document that we see today. So, I'll give the example would be methamphetamine is distinct from amphetamine, that was updated, as also benzodiazepines, alcohol, and other prescription stimulants. He also answered, again, answered several questions, but I do think that there was some formatting issues and just some additional language that needed to be addressed. So I would think that this is sort of a dynamic document, and, you know, I'm comfortable moving forward with it, but I would like us to make those changes and then at least see those changes within a month, would be my suggestion. Those are easy, easy changes, and I'm confident that they'll be done.
But we've got somebody that has read and studied.
Well, I was, I complained about it, so. I had to.
Yeah. Do you mean you didn't spend long hours on the couch going through all of this?
Well, I did, but I certainly didn't get what she did out of me.
Well, I think the point of that is, is I, I appreciate your comment, and it's where my expertise is.
Yeah.
And so I should have done it a while ago, and I'd acknowledge that to interim chief, that I should have dug into it better earlier so we could have these corrected by now, but...
So can we go forward with this in now?
I'm comfortable doing that for sure.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I think it's a good example of taking the time to like, you know, incorporate a bunch of feedback edits, certainly had conversations with interim chief Waugh myself, and you know, we've all discussed and redit, so thank you, Councilman Cox, for the, the final... So thank you, Councilwoman Cox, for the final read there, too. I do question, because we're here responsible for the policy and not the procedure parts of the document. I was trying to track that, Councilwoman Cox. I think most of what you brought up there was procedure. So can we count that as advisement or recommendation to the interim chief and to the mayor, but not amendments? Because that's not our purview.
And Mayor, just if I can respond, the only issue is that it says on the agenda that we're approving the policy and procedure. That was yes, but why I'm comfortable moving with some direction, and I'm not.
Yeah, it's a little challenging given that both policy and procedure are combined in the document, and we only approve technically policy for that. So, other comments?
I have a question. Sorry. So are you making a motion to amend this document with those things that you pointed out? And if you are, then that would have to be seconded and voted on.
Mayor, thank you. I don't know. I need to resolve that in my head because it is primarily procedural, procedural corrections to a dynamic document, meaning it's a forever-changing document essentially, specifically as it relates to procedure. And so I don't know that I'm making a motion, but maybe I should. So yes, I am going to. Talking myself into it. Yeah, thanks, thanks, thanks. I also, I need to make one more comment about.
Please.
One of the big policy, policies in here is body-worn cameras, and it's something that I've delved into a little bit more in other aspects. And one of the, the questions that I needed to be answered was what, if we have body-worn cameras, what is the?
That's the assumption of privacy?
Well, not the assumption of privacy. Are we a one-person consent? Is Wyoming a one-person consent? The answer is yes. So you only need one person to consent to be invidued. You don't need to tell, you know, I don't need to tell chat that I'm videoing. So I think that was important. And then also just background with body-worn cameras, that's a relatively new, you know, across the country, a relatively new policy. And there's been some change to that overall. So procedurally, we need to make sure we're updating that as well. So I guess the amendment that I would make, I do that now? Yes, okay. Is that we would move forward with the adoption or the, yeah, I guess the adoption of the policy and procedure in that the recommended suggestions or the recommended changes that I made be implemented and that we review it in one month. Is that, no? Talk to me.
So you need to make a motion to amend the document, but if you're going to want to see this again in a month, then you're probably going to want to table it to have those, the things changed so that it can come back. Otherwise, we'll have to put it back on. Here's another resolution. So if you want to review it in a month, you're going to have to give yourself some time to do that because it's up for vote tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Could I?
Yeah, please.
I think, well, that, Councilwoman Cox, I think I was going to speak against the amendment because I don't think it's our lane to vote on and approve procedure when that's not, that's not our job here to be on. In fact, when we reviewed the document, interim chief Wa was very generous in showing us all the procedure and entertaining quite a few questions from us so we can understand it. But, you know, barring yourself, Councilwoman Cox, I have no expertise in police procedure, so could not weigh in on saying if that's accurate or appropriate in any form or fashion right now. I looked at policy. We were directed to look at policy. So I think I'd ask Councilwoman Cox, instead of having an amendment, having us take a formal vote on some aspects of procedure, when that's not what we've done throughout. Could you, would you be comfortable with, interim chief Wa has heard this, taken under advisement, might adopt those changes in the procedure sections? We approve policy tonight. And what's unfortunate is the title of the document is policy and procedure. But again, for months now, we've been directed, the policy is what we're approving. So I think you, your expertise is so important here, right? And like, I think that'll be taken seriously likely, but not a step too far for our body, I think, to vote on some select procedural amendments. And we haven't been doing that on procedure before.
Question, Mayor? So some of those general orders reference numbers are within the policy? So how do we?
Yeah, and my understanding is the general orders are kept at the chief's office, not, not in this. So is that correct? That was stated early on in part of the general orders, that they're kept on file in a paper version in the chief's office.
So if I'm understanding completely, you're actually both correct, only in the sense that I believe Councilwoman Cox is referencing, there's general orders with a number, she's wanting the numbers removed. That statement specifically is in a policy. So it's amending of the policy itself to remove that number. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. So I could do that motion, that we remove the general order, the number specifically to the general order, anywhere they appear in a policy.
Correct.
Okay, that would be my motion.
Okay, sweet. We have a motion to amend. We have a, okay, so moved by Councilmember Cox and seconded by Councilmember Larson. Any discussion on that? Okay, call for the question, starting with Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. In terms of the document as a whole, is there any other conversation about that? Okay, can we call for the question then? Councilmember Josh Han?
Yes.
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 And that motion passes. Okay, thanks, y'all. Great, let's move on to, that away. New business, these are all action items. So first up is approved first reading of ordinance 2025-12, granting a franchise to Northern Arapahoe Tribal Industries, Inc., DBA Wind River Internet on behalf of itself and its affiliates to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Lander, Wyoming.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson and seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any discussion on this? See none? Let's call for the question. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next up, the star of tonight's meeting, approved first reading of ordinance 2025-13, amending title to sale, licensing, and use of alcoholic and malt beverages, revoking, replacing, and superseding ordinance 1120 and 2024-5. I get a motion in a second, and we'll dive in.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Before we get into extensive conversation on this, we have a, an amendment for the title itself.
Got it. So Mayor, so some housekeeping here. I would move that we amend this title. Let's see, just make sure I have this clear. We have two different titles. So you might have seen in the notice of public hearing and the document itself, there were two titles, and Clerk Fontaine has settled on one for more accurately reflecting the document. So I move that we title the document, it's the second one here. They sound very similar.
Yes.
Okay, great. To instead be an ordinance repealing City of Lander Municipal Code, Title II, Sale, Licensing, and Use of Alcoholic and Malt Beverages, Sections 2-1-1 through 2-5-1 in its entirety, and replacing it with Title II, Sale, Licensing, and Use of Alcoholic and Malt Beverages, Sections 2-1-1 through 2-6-1. Okay, make sure I'm doing what the clerk wanted me to do.
Great, so we have a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. And let's do a, call for the question on amending the title. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes.
No.
Motion passes 4-2 for the title. In terms of the document itself, what I'm going to suggest is we have conversation page by page so we can be thorough and logical about that. I think we've all got a copy of it in front of us. So on page one, other than the title being changed, are there any comments, question? Would it be helpful to get a hard copy?
Well, I mean, no, as long as I can get to it, I can.
Okay. Oh, look at that. Yep, great. Okay, so to page two. And again, some of these things, like what struck out may appear in another place, but to renumber and have things follow a better sequence with this. And then also some of, I know there's an awful lot of blue in there, and much of what's blue is bringing in the exact language from state statute because we know it's challenging for folks to be finding state statute, and might as well put it in here where it's easier for folks to find. It's a nice education piece. Anything on page two? So that's section 2.11, general adoption of state alcohol beverage laws, and then starting into definitions.
Oh, yes, Mayor. What's the legal definition of sexually oriented?
Don't know that we have that specifically. So it was two years ago, three years ago, when the state said we had to define what adult entertainment was for each town. And that was, that definition is what landed on after looking at a number of varieties of definitions of adult entertainment. And I'll defer to Adam and Rochelle if you have any other information.
Nope. That's what we settled on at that time.
Yeah.
Mayor, I think it's worth expounding on this perhaps. And so, Councilwoman Han, I mean, stepping in, that's what you wanted to go. It's, so I had some feedback about this as well. And the reason that this is defined is because if you go down to the next page, the definition of entertainment is defined as not including adult entertainment. So then we have to define adult entertainment. And the reason that's in Title II here around liquor licenses is because restaurants, or Bar and Grill, thank you, Bar and Grill, those licenses have the split of where they can get their revenues from, and they can have, it's right, 60/40 on alcohol and food and entertainment. But the legislature said not adult entertainment. So then we had to define that. So we're not, I think sometimes this has been read as perhaps the types of business, like being more expansive outside of liquor license holders and outside of the ways revenues can be captured and counted towards that split. It is fairly narrow here, why we're talking about this type of entertainment in this specific business. And then, Councilwoman Han, I hope, I'm not sure that's where you're going, but I just wanted to reflect that because of some of the feedback I heard from folks who are concerned about why, why is that in here? What are we stopping or not stopping happening in town?
Thank you for that. Does that help, Councilmember Han? Not, not really. It doesn't, it doesn't define what, I mean, I know this is going to come, has a potential to come across as being flippant. I don't intend it to be that way, but I, when I see this and I've been asked that, what goes through my mind is what one of our higher-level officials said about, you know, what is pornography? And the answer is, well, you know it when you see it. And I realize that's, that's not providing the level of detail that I think some folks would want. But if you have suggestions about how to better define what constitutes sexually-oriented business, we'd certainly entertain that. No pun intended.
And I, may I just respond to the alcoholic liquor? I think that's interesting that they use alcoholic liquor. That's an interesting, some verbiage there. But there was a suggestion that we do for human consumption because you, there is the time where you have hand sanitizer, hairspray, or those things that are consumed, which is.
It does state for beverage purposes. Well.
Mouthwash.
You can drink it.
Like, yeah, they can drink all mouthwash has alcohol, extracts, or cooking.
And it happens. But those, I mean, again, it, mouthwash is not intended to be a beverage.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not, not supposed to.
Yeah. Okay. Can we move to page two?
Mayor, some thoughts on this one. Definition F for dispensing room is related to, sorry, I don't have the page number here, but if we look down at page three. I'm sorry, is that where we're going?
Yep.
That age of head, okay, great. So I got excited. So dispensing room on page three is defined and refers to, it's used in the section on restaurant liquor licenses. So let's see if I can find that quickly. And it was an attempt, because our, our current language, what this would be amendment to, talks about dispensation of alcoholic beverages for these liquor licenses, just restaurant ones again, needing to be done in an area separate from the dining area. So here we are. If you go to page 15, that defines, it's setting the terms for restaurant liquor licenses, and I believe there's three of those. Is that right, Clerk Fontaine, in our town? Right now?
There's three.
Correct, yeah. So if you look through, you'll see the strike through. That's our current language. Alcoholic malt beverages shall be dispensed and prepared for consumption in an area located upon the premises, licensed premises, separated from the dining area, in which alcoholic and malt beverages may be served. And the proposed change here is to go to dispensing room, which then is defined on page three as, you know, four walls and a door. And I've had some conversation with folks. I've visited the restaurants that are under the current conditions, and it strikes me that there's ways to achieve the goals here without as aggressively, to borrow the term, who brought that up? Of four walls and a door, which, so I'm willing to, or have the council consider that we amend that and we can keep the current language, or perhaps look to some other variations of area separated from the dining area. Might be too loose, perhaps, but four walls and a door felt a little overloaded. Again, when I visited the actual sites and thought, okay, this seems to be separated enough that like, I would be comfortable with my 12-year-old going to get a hamburger and not being at a bar, right? Not seeing alcohol being dispensed, not being in a setting where that was, you know, a primary purpose, perhaps. So that's kind of my arbitrary, sorry, ding, example of like, what's the purpose to this language? And I think we had, you know, some questions about separated, area separated from, and how loosely that could be used. But I think dispensing room being defined as four walls and door feels a bit over, over restrictive. So Mayor, I don't know if you want to look at amendments, not seriously now, or just take discussion, but I propose that at some point.
Yeah, and I thank you for asking that and for bringing that up. And I would say let's make amendments as we go.
Yep.
Because I think there are likely to be a lot tonight, and otherwise I fear them being lost.
Well, fine, just a quick clarification question. Is dispensing room identified in the state language?
No. No, this is, this would be us being more restrictive than state statute.
Mayor, that, that verbiage is trying to, am I correct in assuming that that verbiage is trying to separate it from public view? Is that, is that all you're trying to achieve? And would it, would it be, if you were to write it in such a way that said, out of public view or something to that nature, that you would achieve what you want to without it being so restrictive as it's written now?
Uh, Mayor, I may, I mean, I take a stab because I'm trying to picture the, in a way, I'm not sure if out of view would work either. So I'm thinking of, I don't know if we're not supposed to say exact businesses, but there's places you, the middle floor, for example. I think people say it's in view, but you have to search for it. It's in the far corner of the room, and it's certainly done in a private manner that again, if you're in the dining area, it's not obvious at all. Somebody's going over the back of that room. And so I don't know if out of view gets there. I think what I was, where I was going to go here is, I'm not comfortable with a room with four walls and a door, and the current language. I don't know that we've right-sized it with area separated from the dining room, like the current language, maybe too loose. So I guess I would invite, actually, perhaps we amend away the new language tonight, but take input from folks, again, who are operating in these settings, and maybe go and visit a few to say, hey, four walls and a door might be too tight and restrictive and onerous. And what is the actual intention here? What other language could we add later? In addition to, to change the current separated from, which is fairly vague.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is an amendment to strike it at this point. Okay? So we have a.
So strike the definition, Mayor. So maybe, I'll raise this for our counselor. I move that we amend this to strike the definition F, dispensing room, and the language in restaurant liquor license, again on page?
14.
14. That you took return to its original language from now.
Great, we have a, it's current. Motion to amend? Can I get a second?
It's a little unclear. We're, we're striking the definition, and on page 14 and/or 15, or whatever page you have, all these documents are. these documents are a little bit different based on, so on B.
Yep.
Yes. What's the change?
Return to the current language instead of the proposed change here, which is where dispensing room is added. So the, if we pass, so if we pass this amendment, then currently restaurant liquor licenses 2.4.1B would be as is currently. Alcoholic malt beverages shall be dispensed and prepared for consumption in an area located upon the licensed premises, separated from the dining area in which alcoholic and malt beverages may be served.
Okay, so clarification of the motion. Anyone interested in a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Mayor, I just say a to-do list for anybody who's running a restaurant. Let's, let's chat about, you know, the area separated from. There's some improvements to that language perhaps. It's not this version.
Great, let's call for the question on this amendment, starting with Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
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 Great, that one passes. I want to call attention to E above. I don't get to make amendments, but I would like to suggest that someone make an amendment that we put a period after the word violations and strike the remainder of that in complete sentence.
So moves, Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Larson. I think that's pretty straightforward, call for the question. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. I do want to just make a note on H about gambling. There are questions about what constitutes gambling. I would suggest you look at state statute 67101. It's very clear there about what, what's allowed and what's not. Anything else on that page?
Mayor, actually, can we dive into that one for a little bit? Because I've had some conversation there as well. Is that the current, I wanted to check, that's the current definition we're under right now? That's not a change to gambling, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And so the activities that have been brought up, 50/50s, nonprofits doing some of these activities for fundraisers, they would still be allowed?
As long as the business does not benefit from the financial. So if it goes to, we do 50 and I, I win and it's for the football team, they get 50 and I get 50. So the business itself does not benefit from it.
Right.
And the participant, it has no control over the outcome.
And in the setting we're talking about, the host of the gambling is not the liquor license holder, it's, it's another entity then? So this would not apply or would apply, does that make sense?
I think you have to clearly define that in there. If that's your intent is 50/50 raffle such as that, right? If I partake in, it's a fundraiser for the football team that the owner doesn't, but if we're applying it to the liquor license, though, it would be the liquor establishment is not taking a cut, right? If I can use a transparent example, if Ms. Motherway is putting a, providing a bar service for an entity, but they have 50/50 in there, as long as she herself, as the business owner, is not taking a cut, then it's fine. The benefit goes to whatever it's for and whoever buys in wins.
Again, this, this is state statute language that is brought in here and similar to what you mentioned earlier, this is part of the non-alcohol revenue cannot come from gambling. So that's why we, we have it included here.
Thank you.
All right, we turn to three. Anything on the remainder of the definitions or moving to the application requirements? I will note, one of the things that struck out there, and this is part of what caused consternation for council, is what you see in the middle of the page there, 2-1-3 about hearing. And so what is being proposed later in this document is a clarification of the procedure. Council does not have the authority to revoke or suspend. That has to be done by district court. And that's part of why, why we have that extensive language in there about that process that comes later.
Yeah, our numbers just don't match up, so I apologize. But you're referencing 2-1-3 on my page.
Page four.
Four.
Yep. Yeah.
I guess I'm struggling a little bit that we're going page by page with this in the sense of, I don't know that we've done this before as practice. But that's what we're doing, we're just going through page by page and not.
Me, considering the, the volume of questions that are gonna be brought, I think to go hodgepodge through this is going to be confusing. So kind of like how we go through budget, page by page. And if there's questions, great, if not, we'll move on to the next page.
Mayor, may I move to table this until after Thursday, until the next meeting? Until the business owners can attend the meeting on Thursday? So that they get a little more intel, a little more information, they can ask questions, give their input a little more than three minutes at a time in a meeting. I don't think we should make a decision on this yet until they have that opportunity. I think it's fair to them, it was sprung on them pretty quick.
You can absolutely make that, that motion.
I'm making that motion.
Great. We have a motion to table this until, well, we, we would need a date at which we would revisit this.
I guess it would be the next council meeting if that gives everybody enough time. You know, I, this was kind of brought on to all the business owners kind of rapidly. I think we should give them time to mill it over and look at it, have their chance to ask questions and get information before we make decisions on their behalf.
Okay. So you're moving to table.
I'll second that.
The November 12th meeting. Okay, moved by Councilmember Josh Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Dan Hahn. Discussion on tabling, or shall we move to the vote? Just Councilmember Cassidy.
Mayor, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the process that where this is one of three.
Correct.
You know, and this is the hard yards, I think, that we need to do. You know, I think we, we have heard that is iteration one of probably many. There's some, there's some good work that we probably can do today. And we can, we can adopt some of these changes and then we can change them again in version two and then perhaps in version three. So I'm not really in favor of pushing that timeline further. We're gonna hear more on the backside, what we do today, I believe, that will be helpful for us. We'll probably hear things on Thursday that will be helpful for us in the coming meetings as well. So I think this is the hard yards, so we should do this today.
Thank you for that. And I certainly see both sides of that coin. In terms of being able to have more time for our business owners to review it. And I would also say, and why I think I'm more similar, more aligned with the idea of working through this, is I think we heard some things tonight that, that we can make changes to, like perhaps when we get to the demerit system, that financial penalty goes to the individual who did that and points go towards the license. Like that's something we could easily change tonight for that. We could change the point value for when kind of the next step in a process would be to allow for a little more grace for business owners, which would be a way to allay some of the concerns for Thursday night's meeting. But that's my take on it. I don't vote unless there's a tie, but I do get to share my, my thoughts on that. Other thoughts before we vote for this?
Mayor, I think.
Councilmembers Stubble.
One thing I'd offer in favor of continuing the line-by-line tonight is, one, we absolutely, we've said this, right? We thank you for the input, we're gonna incorporate some, we're gonna ask questions, incorporate some into the next round after Thursday. So I do believe in the, the lengthy process we have, it will allow for quite a bit of incorporation. I think what I'd offer tonight in favor of continuing what we're doing on the line-by-line is there's a transparency for all of you. If you hear what we're thinking and debating and asking questions about, and I hope it's helpful to say, gosh, I want to hear more about this right now. So maybe I'm not gonna propose that amendment, but like help me understand that on Thursday or in the next week. So if we end the discussion tonight, it almost feels to me like a bit of a disservice that you might not know where we are, or what some of us individually are thinking, or where the pinch points are that we want to get more feedback on. So there's, there's a transparency that appeals to me by continuing the discussion tonight. And then again, we'll reiterate that commitment that it's not a final vote tonight. And so we'll continue to do version 1.5, 1.2.0, right through the next few months likely. Thank you, Mayor.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Dan Hahn?
Yeah, I'll give a comment. You know, if you're around long enough, you, you see the same thing over and over. You know, it, every time you get a new batch of people in, they try to, they, they try to reinvent the wheel. You know, we, we started out with leader corp, then it went to LITA, now we're changing that. And then they have, you have mission statements and all these different statements. And every time somebody comes in new, they make up a bunch more language. And all this stuff has been working all along, but it, it just, if you're around long enough and you see it, it's just, it's just unbelievable to watch. Because all the, all the language we've been living with, most of it for 20 years has been fine. And, and now we're breaking this stuff down and like even the sentences, you got this little stuff and then you guys are rewriting and then, and all the stuff you scratched out, that's what it said. But you put it in, you, you, you make it, and that's what's happening. People want to make it theirs, they don't want to use somebody else's, they always have to create something new. It's like, it, it, it's, it's amazing. I mean, it just seems like a lot of this, you, you really don't advance, you just work over the same stuff year after year. And, and I, sometimes I, I wonder, you know, really, why? Why? There's so many things that have been, that have been around for years and years and years and they, and they, they do, they do the job, but people have to, you know, change words around and do all this and they spend so much time, so much time. And I guess that's our prerogative to do that here, but it just blows my mind. I mean, we have, we have all this language that says something. And then here we're, we're, we're changing all these words, what we, you know, I'm not kidding you, we, we did this, you know, 12, 14 years ago. And it was the same battle, you know, it was like, oh man, we gotta do, you know, this and that and this and that. And I don't know, I, I, I guess I just, I've been around too long and I don't understand it because it, it's just beating the same old thing up and it's, 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 it's all the same stuff. It's just, you change the words around and, and.
Some significant differences here, Dan. Look at.
Sorry, I want to bring us back to the.
Just in general.
The first, first question here is, we have a motion in a second to table it. And so if we can focus on that part of the conversation, I don't know, Councilmember Larson, if that's where you're going with your preference about whether to table or not, but I want to keep us focused on that, that topic first.
Okay. I'll, I'll withdraw my comment right now.
Okay. Any other comments about whether or not to, or discussion about to table or not to table? So we'll call for the question, Councilmember Larson. This would be tabling until November 12th for the first reading.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Oh, so this is 3-3, so this is actually the time when I vote. And I'm gonna be a no on that. I believe there's work we can do in response to what we've heard from the community to make Thursday's meeting a little better and show that we are being responsive to that.
Mayor, may I? You know, I read through this, I've read through it a couple of times. And it's our right to drink, it's our freedom to drink. I don't partake in a whole lot of bar action and all that stuff. But it's something we're allowed to do.
Correct.
Now, drinking and breaking the law is not allowed. So why do we have to pound and pound and pound on the people serving alcohol when, you know, the states, the state has all their regulations, the federal regulations, they cover it all. And, and all this stuff, you know, I have to kind of agree with Councilman Hahn on this. You know, you're just adding a bunch of stuff that's already in the state. State regulations and the federal regulations, except for we're adding stipulations of, well, if you do this wrong, we're gonna give you this amount of points. And if you get this amount of points, we're gonna, you know, take you to coordinates of possibility you could lose your license. It's, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me that we're bringing all these business people into here and making them, you know, feel like they're not doing their jobs properly because of one incident, which if you go to other towns, they have their bars that aren't, you know, the popular ones that get in trouble and stuff. And you don't see them making a whole bunch of rules and regulations for everybody. This doesn't feel right to me, and when something doesn't feel right, I don't do it. It's not, this isn't right. I don't agree with that. I think, I think the state and federal regulations are plenty enough, and I think everybody sitting in this room obeys by the laws. And I stand with the business owners of this town, I'm not gonna go against them. It's just like I stand with my constituents on, you know, that come to me with their issues on the state or the city.
Yeah.
It's, this is a tough, I don't like working through it because I don't like it. I don't like this, I don't like all these changes to it because of one incident. People are allowed to drink. They're allowed, they can go home, they can drink, they can go to a bar, they can drink, they can't go break the law. There's a difference between people serving alcohol and somebody going out drinking and breaking the law. That's why I don't, you know, they're the ones causing the problem, not the business owner.
Yeah, thanks for sharing your thoughts. And, and I would state that when we get to the demerit system, I hope you have some suggestions about where you would prefer it to be from, you know, making amendment to abolish it or change the, at what point threshold a hearing would happen, et cetera, for that. Since, you know, we do, we do have the document and so this is the, the process we work through. And so when we get to that part, I welcome.
Let's do it.
Hearing your suggestions for it. So anything else? We didn't, didn't bring up anything on page four, we good? Looking over to page five. And Rochelle, I'm gonna look to you for some of this because there's a lot of blue here and most of this is taken, brought from the current state statute and simply copying the language so it's easier for our liquor license holders to, to read. Is that correct? There was in my umpteenth read of this on H, this gets a little bit confusing, so this is the bottom of page five. So HI is correct. I would ask for someone to make amendment for what's the very last one there, three, the appropriate licensing authority to become number two. So the current number two becomes three. We actually have two number twos here. And the second number two, I would likewise ask in this amendment to be stricken because the last part here, turning over to page six, what's currently numbered as four, is the exact language from the state statute for the bar and grill license renewal.
So we're keeping the original number two, the HI. And then we're striking the second HI.
Correct.
Because it's number four. Is that correct?
Keep, keep number one. Number three at the bottom becomes number two. The first number two, we keep. The second number two is stricken. And that's it. So we're, we're cleaning up the state statute language, basically.
Mayor, I have a question for you. To be clear, so remaining will be line items, submit a subject food service permit.
Yep.
That'll remain. Remaining will be an applicant for a bar and grill liquor license. Will that remain?
Correct.
Being, being removed will be when renewing a bar and life and grill liquor license.
Correct.
That will be removed. Remaining will be the appropriate licensing authority. Remaining will be the appropriate licensing authority.
Correct.
And remaining will be upon application for license renewal.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but I can't make an amendment.
Need a clarification on four. This is directly from the state statute?
Correct.
So this already exists?
Correct.
From the.
Yep.
From that. So they have to provide a report of their annual gross sales figures to the state?
So they submit to the licensing authority, which is us, and that report shall contain the annual gross sales figures.
And is that public knowledge? So if they're, if they're giving us that documentation, does that become public knowledge?
It has the potential.
Do we have to clarify that in some capacity? That it would be public knowledge then?
I mean, we can, but we don't necessarily have to. Anything that's in possession of the city is considered public information that can be requested through a public records request?
Yeah, it, it agreed. It's a sticky one. I totally get where business owners would have reticence to submit that. And yet we are, as the governing body, are obligated to uphold state statute. And that's what state statute is saying has to be included in the report.
Mayor, Rochelle, did you say there was one section there that was additive natured?
So the language, annual report from licensee's accountant or accounting program to the licensing authority, that language is not in the state statute. The state statute just requires a report reporting the annual gross sales broken into those three categories.
Is the purpose for that additional verbiage?
But we just. Making the report.
There was some concerns from some individuals that merely reporting on the form wasn't enough.
I would say if it's additive and it's, and it's not required at the state level, that we strike it.
Striking the first sentence of.
That added, that added verbiage, I would suggest that, or we strike that. If, if, if they can report to the state and the state can, can trust those figures. So can we?
They, they submit to us.
Yeah, Mayor, may I clarify that? The, the state requires that submitted, it's, it's, we're the arbiters, lack of a better word, of that report. So the state doesn't see those figures or that report, we do. So I think the distinction here, if I may, Clerk Fontaine, correct me here, is currently it's broad enough that we might just have an attestation. Somebody writing on a piece of paper, yep, 60% of my revenues are from food, 40% from liquor, I promise. And now we're trying to look at having a bit more, what's the word here, documentation, got a, thank you, yeah.
And I, I might point out that both, what is the paragraph council is considering striking, as well as the paragraph we're discussing, are both found to some extent in Wyoming statute 12, 4, 413, H and K. And so the original language for the paragraph four that we're talking about is K in the state statute. And it reads, upon application for license renewal, comma, a license holder shall submit an annual report to the licensing authority on the sales of the licensed bar and grill, period. The report shall contain the annual gross sales figures of the bar and grill and shall separate the gross sale figures into the following three categories. One, food service sales, two, alcoholic and malt beverage sales, and three, entertainment sales. So you can see the additional language there. And that generally is done by filling out the application. There's a, a section on the application for bar and grill licenses that has total gross sales and then breaks down those three categories. And generally what you'll see is a, is a total number and then, you know, broken down into three that adds up to the total. So are you still making the suggestion that we strike the, a license holder shall submit an annual report from their license, their accountant or their accounting program?
It would, I think we'd, in order to stay aligned with state statute, it would be only striking accountant or accounting program. Because the state statute does say that, that first part, upon application for license renewal.
Right. So my concern is, is whether or not it's onerous and then if it's public record. If that, if that level of detail is public record, is that going to affect negatively a business owner? And if it does, I'm not for that. I'm, I'm not for that. If, if, if it does not have a negative impact and some, maybe we can ask about on Thursday or we can hear about on Thursday. If they feel that that would have a negative impact on, on their ability to conduct their business, that level of detail, then I'm not, I'm not supportive of that at all. So I'm just concerned about that. And I don't, I don't think that any of us have the answer to that, you know, that they do. So perhaps it's something that goes, sorry, answering your question, long way around. Perhaps it goes to version 2.0, to reading 2.0 post Thursday.
So not amending now, but considering for second reading to strike.
Yes, correct, but I just want to make sure that that's discussed.
Yep.
Well, I think I would make the motion that we strike it. I think it's overreaching and I think that it's something that's not included in the state, current state statute. So that we would strike the idea that we want the, the language that is additive, the licensee accountant or accounting program. And that we maintain the language of 12, 4, 12 dash 4 dash 413K.
Got a motion by Councilmember Cox to amend this. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Josh Hon. Any further discussion?
So I do have one question. So there was, there was a difference of kind of a understanding of what this document might be. It's a, it's a accounting program with details and data versus just say someone attesting to a document saying that it's 64th split or whatever is supposed to be prior to flyers.
They, they still need gross sales. So not a percentage, but sales, figures.
There's no verification.
Right.
Yep.
That, that's the whole thing. And I see with the accounting thing, is there verification?
Well, maybe if they give you an accounting program, which is like QuickBooks. I mean, you could do QuickBooks and that would be your verification on your, so I, I guess, maybe. But it might be also in your gross sales, but then that's where you would get it was from your QuickBooks. So it's kind of a, I think it's overreaching. Private business.
Other discussion?
Especially since it's public record. If it wasn't available to the public to scrutinize and look at, and then they could be like, oh, I can make some money here or there or whatever. So that's my only hesi, my main hesitation is that it's public record.
Other discussion?
Mayor, I'll add that, I mean, I certainly don't want to have any release of proprietary information that's going to threaten a business's viability or completely, like, absolutely not, right? And I'm going to vote no on this motion to strike for now because I want to do this as a to-do list for like more feedback, please. Like tell us, is there a way we can get from a, a report that might be very basic and unverifiable to an intention, something we can verify without getting into the realm of confidential information? So if we strike it now, I don't want to like preclude that in, that conversation. So I'm going to vote no tonight with a caveat, maybe we change this in the future, but I need more feedback from all of you in the room on that. Of what we could, how do we get the intention of verifiability? If it's not this language, what is it?
So potentially your timeout, like an attestation that has a little bit more.
Something that, yeah, that we can.
But, but not as far as.
If the state has said to us, ensure that this is the split they're having. I don't know how to do that with something that just says, you know, $50,000 this year, 60, 40 split, I promise.
It's the legal status of that report?
Yeah.
If they, if they say it's split in this way, is that, they attesting to that is, what's the legal status of that? Okay, okay.
Okay. So then perhaps, Mayor, that is our safeguard then, that there, if we had some, I don't know how we would have suspicion though. Right, this is really worst case scenario thinking, so like forgive me on that, but like, if you're saying that they sign it and it's fraudulent, then that's our safeguard. But I don't know how we would know to prove that or, and the state's not helping us in this, right? So there's something better here perhaps, and I don't, I don't know what it is, I think it's the.
Yeah.
Work with us on this one.
I, my, my question would be, how would we verify it with the accounting or the accounting program? The same way.
That's fairly easy to do with the accounting program. You know, you just say, okay, you go down your income columns there and you have so much for, for food service. You have so much for entertainment, so much for, what was the other thing there, the, the malt beverage? And you have those three figures, they come back up here, what you're saying is your gross sales, you know? There's. They're different and have it written down, you know, other than you've got something that's verified, not, not something that's, uh, this is, this, this made the figures, you know, I mean, there, there's just some verification.
Am I misunderstanding this? Is this basically saying that we would be looking at this information and making that judgment? Or is this going to the state, right? This is a state level?
No, no, we would be making that determination. So the state says this is what the local authority has to verify.
I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's up to us. If the state is the, the people who issue the liquor licenses, correct?
No, we do.
We.
The city of Lander.
So it's up to them whether they are, it's up to the state whether they are capable of, like they submit their, their information, correct? And then the state says, okay, they would like a liquor license, and then it's up to us to make a determination.
To actually award it. Yep, we are, the, the city of Lander is the licensing authority.
Okay.
Yeah, so renewals come through.
Why would it be, why would it be our business what they're making? Like I don't, I, another thing I don't like.
This, this is the challenge of the state statute, very clearly states how the revenue has to be made. And then say, and then also gave the responsibility to verify that to the local government that issues the liquor license.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're right, we are caught in the middle. It's utterly frustrating. Mayor, what? Mayor, there's so many things I would love to change about the state liquor division, but I have no authority to do that. Yeah, so, Councilmember Cassidy?
Just last, I think last thing for me on this particular one is I would support Councilman Cox. I think that we don't ask for that detailed information and that we, we lean on the bias of trust of those reports. I think that's what we, I think that we should do is it's a, you know, trust is the basis of the relationship between the, the license holders and the community. And we need to extend that trust to them. And if they're going to report to us, we're going to, we're going to trust that those reports are accurate and true. And we're going to move forward. So I would support the, the, the version struck.
Okay. Think with that, are we ready to devote on this amendment? So the, the vote would be amending to strike accountant or accounting program from this paragraph. And so an affirmative vote means agreeing with that. And we'll start with Councilmember Larson.
We do that one more time.
So the amendment is to strike the words accountant or accounting program from this paragraph?
No.
Yes.
Yep. Councilmember Hon, how do you vote for this? Do you want to strike this?
Uh, I, I'm with you on this one.
You, you're saying yes to strike it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, no.
Yes.
Okay, that passes 4-2. All right.
Mayor, I think that we did not move to strike the second double I's.
That's right.
I'll make that motion on page five on the, on this document at least. So H, the second double I, we strike. Be redundant with I four, I'm sorry, four.
Motion by Councilmember Stubble. Is there a second for that?
Second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Cox. Call for the question, Councilmember Hon.
Yes.
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 Awesome, that passes. And we are all the way onto page seven.
420.
I know.
Feels like.
Thank you for the audience. I know this is like watching paint dry. But this, this is part of being an open and transparent process and we appreciate you being here, sticking through this. So I think the section CG is another place where we've heard from our constituents that perhaps 30 days, within 30 days of hire is too short. Is there a different number of days that folks would want to suggest for that?
Just, just a quick.
We're on page seven.
A quick, I looked at other municipalities and counties that said it at 90 days. So I think that's a reasonable amount of time. If we hear from business owners on Thursday that, that they need more time, we can perhaps look at that in version two. But I would suggest nine days.
Is that, making it a formal amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Second that.
Great, moved by Councilmember Cassidy, seconded by Councilmember Josh Hon. Call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Sorry, Mayor, what was the number there?
90 days.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah.
Great, that passes. Anything else on that page? I guess the rest of that is definitions are moved elsewhere. Can we move to page eight?
Yep.
So one thing that I would suggest here is deletion is in 221, A standards F, to remove the occupancy limit, because that's really more of a building code than liquor license.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Larson, seconded. Seconded by Councilmember Josh Hon.
And Mayor, that's, just to clarify, that's clearly stated somewhere else in our building codes that occupancy must be stated. So we're removing it from this section, being non-German, but it's, okay, covered.
Yeah, great. Call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Great, that passes. Anything else on eight?
Yeah, Mayor, can we, perhaps not amend it, but just a further discussion? Because we heard quite a bit of comments on the concept of calling the police when somebody has been asked to leave the bar. And I just want to deep dive that a little longer. You know, we had someone in introduction, but like Interim Chief Wa, can you give us some more of the reasoning and the benefits to that? Because we've heard of bar owners, or sorry, license holders talk about that being potentially onerous for them.
So the intent behind notifying the police department when you remove someone from your establishment is for us to put officers in the area within a reasonable amount of time to make sure that this person is doing the right thing by going home or not continuing to cause problems down at a different bar. This is something that we put in place in Sheridan, that's been put in place in Gillette. I don't have statistics for you, but it reduces a ton of crime in the sense of now that I'm intoxicated, starting problems. You've, you've heard the lady at the Maverick speak. They call it a night when there's two fights. We would like to reduce that as quickly as we can, as safely as we can for the community safety. If you've, if you've been removed from somewhere due to a level of intoxication or aggravation, we as the police department would like to step forward in a non-enforcement, if we can, to get you home safe and to reduce it from happening somewhere else. That's the intent behind that.
Any follow-up questions on that?
Yeah, it's actually nice to have what the intent and the impact of this is going to be. And that's, you know, down Main Street of additional potential problems. I just don't, I just, it's hard to know how to, how to hold people accountable to that or if we should.
The other side of it, I think, is we're breaching everybody's favorite time of year in Lander, what the weather. If someone's removed and, and does not make the right choice, doesn't end up at another bar, they, they lay down or pass out somewhere in an alley or a park or something, a very high percentage of the, they're not going to be with us tomorrow. So the other side of us being aware of a highly intoxicated person that was removed from somewhere, again, on the safety aspect, is, is to get them to where they need to be in a. again, on the safety aspect, is is to get them to where they need to be in a safe, warm place versus deceased and or causing problems somewhere else.
Mayor, I think that, no, go ahead. I think what strikes me there, too, is we're not criminalizing that person.
Correct.
Right, we're, what I'm hearing from you, what it says here is, so they've, they've been asked to leave. The patron has some good reason to say you're endangering people in this property, please leave, right?
Two two one.
I think I heard some comments of like, that's not, you know, it's illegal for them to be drunk on the street. Maybe that's a bad example to say. But I, I think what we're hearing is, we want to know so we can, one, mitigate possible future effects, possible harm in other establishments, right? To other people if they choose to drive, or perhaps help them with, here's WRTA, here's rights, zero degrees out. So I just want to like lift that up here. I think we're not saying we're going to call the police and then it's going to be a criminal action.
That's not our intent. I think i- if you transparently put forward, unfortunately, due to our line of work, ninety-five percent of what we do is reactive in nature. That's just what we do. Very small chances, such as this one, do we have a time to be proactive in a non-enforcement, non-criminal type of way? We are servants of the public. Our job is to be caretakers of the public, and and this is one way that we would be able to help you noncriminally, get to where you need to be to make better decisions.
Mayor, can you, oh, sorry. I would, I would also note, so if you look at section B of of standards, I I would actually suggest that this be broken into two parts. So one is, the expectation is that a server tells a patron to leave who is endangering people or property in the licensed premises. And then separate from that, notify the Lander Police Department of any criminal incident as soon as reasonably possible. So we're not saying that you need to call the police when, when it's like, hey, time to, time to head back home, missy. Yeah, you're right, I'm going to shuffle back home. You can call the police, but you're not required to. It's if I start picking up a bar stool and, you know, swinging it, that's, that's the endangerment and potential criminal action.
There is, though, in this section, in section two dot, two dot one, am I saying that right? The E is the penalty, so there's each violation of a standard set out in this section shall constitute a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not more than seven hundred and fifty dollars and in accordance with the current adopted City of Lander fee schedule. May result in conviction is punishable by a fine of not more than seven hundred and fifty dollars or other penalties. Evidence that the licensee or his or her employee summoned police to deal with activity within the establishment that is prohibited by this title may be considered in mitigation of the penalty that may be imposed for eviction. So there is still the, you know, language of penalty there.
I believe there's probably some language that needs to be cleared up in the sense I've heard a couple of times tonight through owners that the perception is if something happens a second or subsequent time, that now the offense goes just to the license holder, not to the person that committed it. That's not the case. If we're there for a crime, the person that committed the crime is still going to receive a criminal violation, a criminal citation for that crime. The second or subsequent, when we start to talk to the owners, is, hey, this is a pattern, we've got to get this corrected. It doesn't negate what the bad actor did. And I think that needs to be clarified.
I would also suggest that in Thursday's conversation, that we better articulate, a fight is not a criminal offense.
Fight? Yeah.
Well, I guess you're right, assault would be, sorry, my bad. I mean, being rowdy, so. Yeah.
So currently in in state statute, please correct me if I'm wrong here, it's only criminal trespass where police officers would be required, or law enforcement would be required to be called, right? If you tried to, if you tried to tell them to leave and they said no. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the verbatim, the definition of criminal trespass in Wyoming is it has to be clearly marked or the person has to be told or understood that they are not allowed to be there anymore. Those two, one of those two things has to happen before they can be criminally charged with criminal trespass.
That, that's one that's already in state statute, and the other one would be if they commit a crime.
Whatever that crime is.
Yeah. That's passed. Those are, so we're adding, this is active nature, and it's it's only with regards to our concern is that they move down the road, right?
Yeah, and again, I'm not a bar owner, but my perception of it is this. The intoxicated person that's causing a problem is not making you any money. In turn, I'm going to protect other business owners in my community, my partners in this, by getting this handled before it continues to be their problem.
Mayor, I wonder if one of the, one of the fixes here is the standards before and after this, so don't serve a patient, patron who's obviously intoxicated, right? No over-service. Don't sell to somebody under twenty-one, those are clearly in line of my mind as standards that then we're going to enforce with the penalties in E, right? That's, those are misdemeanors. We're going to take action against the server who's over-serves, or if proven, right? Or serves to a minor. I wonder if this, this language actually maybe doesn't belong here, because it's not, if, if an owner or a server doesn't order a patient, patron to leave, that's not a violation of a law in the same way as serving under twenty-one. But it's by being in the standards and the standards have been held to the punishments, if that's a better word, there's a mismatch there perhaps, from the goal of what we want to get is we want to know if a criminal incident happened or if it obviously intoxicated, intoxicated, intoxicated person who might slur their speech does not leave, is asked to leave, and we want to then know to, you know, mitigate harm down the road. So those two intentions perhaps don't line up with it being here in standards. I'm not sure where to put it, but that's what I want to pose.
Now, I was going to suggest that this would be a conversation on Thursday night with the liquor license holders of being able to take a deeper dive on, on both, better understand your perspective and their perspective, and from them coming up with, can we better articulate what this constitutes? Are folks okay with that?
So there's some work to be done here, what you're saying, we're going to figure it, yeah.
Yeah.
I do have one thing, on A through E, those subparas, can you highlight for us which of those are in state statute already? And which ones are not, in just A through E, because F, if I'm not mistaken.
Are you, are you talking about under subsection A?
Two two one, subsection A, A through E, which of those are already in state statute?
You mean, so I, I want to make sure I understand what you're asking.
Yes.
Are you saying that, are any of these, as stated, a violation of state statute already? Or is there a state statute that would create a criminal offense if any of these things were accomplished or not?
Correct, and I'm, and I'm asking because I believe they are, bar maybe one. But I just wanted to hear from, from you, are these?
I mean, I'd have to look it up. I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Sure. So sale to a minor is twelve six one oh one, sale to intoxicated person, sorry, sale to intoxicated persons, twelve six one oh one. I think there was one other one, twelve five three oh one. I think those are both, but it would be helpful to know which of those are state statute already, and which ones are not. And that'll help us maybe speak to it on Thursday and in, in the subsequent council meetings.
Great.
I do also want to point out that in D, it says dispensing area, are we going to be striking that language?
No, that's what we're keeping.
We, that's the one we're keeping? Okay.
Mayor, and I think you might have misspoke, we did strike dispensing room is what we stroke, so we should, struck, so we should double check the exact coverage there. Because right now it's just area separated from, right, which is longer and lengthier. The other housekeeping piece here perhaps is, I'm reading standard B, order any patron to leave and depart and notify police of criminal incident, and D, report other criminal activity in the licensed building. Are those redundant, or is there a nuance there I'm missing that they're different in kind? B and D.
Potentially different, so, yeah.
They both have reporting requirements of criminal activity.
Yeah, so dealing drugs, prostitution, those would be D.
Okay. Okay, I see that.
Okay. Can we move to page nine? And I would propose after that that we take a break before we all go cray cray. So one thing that caught my eye again in today, rereading this, is E, penalty. I am pretty sure that the maximum that we can charge for a misdemeanor is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And in our points and demerit system, there's a couple that we suggested as a thousand, and we've also heard from some business owners, they would prefer higher fees over a demerit system. And this is what I believe would limit us from being able to do that.
This is in a criminal case, not a demerit case, which is what we've been.
Yeah, because we love the fines, we have that all the time, we're fees and that.
And our misdemeanors, our ordinances don't carry jail time as well as just a fine? Are these just fineable offenses, or are they also six months in jail? I guess that's important to know.
I think all of these would be civil.
I, I guess there needs to be a distinction of whether or not these are actual criminal offenses or if they're civil fines. Because if they're civil fines and it's a fine that is not criminal, and the city assesses those fines, and then there'd be due process to be able to say, I mean, they could appeal that, and there'd be due process, right? Whether they were fined civilly.
And our, our civil fines are limited at seven hundred and fifty, is that correct? Or do we have the latitude to have higher than that?
Mayor?
That, that, want to hear from?
I, I have, I'd have to look into that, I don't know if we necessarily have a limit on assessing a civil fine, but I'd have to look into that.
Okay.
Criminal fines are limited at seven fifty-four misdemeanor.
That's true.
That is.
Civil fines, I don't, I don't believe that.
I don't deal with civil, I'm the police, we do criminal.
Okay, so something, something to determine later. Councilmember Dan Hahn.
I, I had a question, if we're, if we're going to go down this road with the, the fines and the demerits, can we can we set it up to where we have a fine situation that if they meet a, if they meet a, a certain number of fines, then it kicks them over into a demerit system? So you have a split system? So for all the people, you know what I mean? So, so people that are, that are which we assume everything's going to be like that, they'll never even jump into the demerit system. Have a demerit system that is offset for people that are going down the wrong trail.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, so most people, they're not going to have to worry about that. They're going to be over here, if that little something happens, they happen, they're not worried about it. But they know if you jump into some, some, and maybe we have to bump the fines up a bit, but you, you bump the fines up and you say, okay, you hit a, you hit a maximum on the fine, now you're, now you're, you're jumped over into the demerit system. And, and so I, I, I'm just wondering, you know, since we're the makers, maybe we could do that. We, we have it start out in, in, over here, and if they hit a certain number, they jump over.
Yeah. Agreed that we are, we're the makers of the system and can certainly do that. I want to be mindful of our time, our audience members, and so here's what I'd like to propose, open to feedback on it. Let's take a ten-minute break, get up, stretch, move around, get some blood flowing. And when we come back to jump ahead to the demerit point fine system, because that's certainly one of the major concerns of our, the folks who've spoken tonight. And then wait on anything else for a second reading. How does that sound? Can I get a thumbs up, thumbs down, or midway about?
Thumbs up, sweet. I do have some major concerns with the plan of operation, and I understand that you want to wait, but that's sort of what we brought up in the past, to table it, and we said no, and so now we're essentially tabling it halfway through. So I'm all about just getting through it. That's what we're going to do, we're going to do it. Midnight it is, that's what the Dodgers game went to. Eighteen innings.
So. All right, so, so that clock's going to be our, our arbiter of truths when the big hand is on the eleven, we'll be back in. Yep. Yeah, so get up, stretch likewise for our community members.
I'm going to tag you out if you're still in depth.
Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. We got five more minutes. Oh, Lord, it's a hole. We all got it. Oh, obviously. Thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Somebody threw candy everywhere. Feelings.
You know, you are. We're in it, we're in it, we're in it.
Yeah, yeah, we're tilted down.
Got, got good momentum. Everybody's in the cage. I suppose you know about that.
It's all right.
Put it down to take it.
Yeah, this other, this, this is supposed to happen after this work session?
Work session, yep. Was it Benny Hutt? No, there's.
Yeah, not much. And it's worth to, to, and we do that. Did you go to the, the planning last week or whenever I was the next week?
No.
I was away.
I was hunting and it's a good thing because I went up and killed a bull, the big one, so.
You killed it for Janelle there?
I was three, I was three quarters of a mile away. I wasn't even around her. I went, I went like this. I went, there was this big, a big ridge and a big, big, deep canyon. And I, I jumped out here and I took her, I put her all the way down here and she was, she was way down here. Comes down, big old canyon, and there's a big canyon like this. I had her on this side. I, I went and I, I went down and dogged the timber. Came all the way down and I was literally down in this canyon. I hear this pop. I'm like, damn! And I hear another pop and I'm, I'm like, dang it. I wonder if that's her shooting. I didn't know. So I get on the phone and I messenger, hey, was that you shooting? And right after I got my, my finger off the phone, it says, get over here. I got a bull down. He was over here looking and this big monster comes out 200 yards away and she looks over.
Thank you, everyone. So first I need to do a mea culpa. I did not realize we actually need to formally call for a break. Now I know. So, second one I, I want to run by council. So obviously after this, we still have a work session as part of tonight's meeting. My question is to what extent we are going to be functional at that point, given that we still have two big topics to talk about? And so what is, again, if I can get a, you know, somewhere on the thumbs up to thumbs down about to what extent a work session will be functional tonight? I'm looking for you for that with the idea being that by the time we get to the work session, we will acknowledge that we are out of time, even though we're not the Dodgers. So sorry for midnight. That we, we will not be doing our best work for that. So can I get?
And Madam Mayor, before you do that, just a point of order. The meeting was advertised and so you will have to go into the work session itself. So you still have to convene that meeting because it was advertised at that point. If the intent is to reschedule them to come back on a different day, you can certainly do that, but you still will have to go into.
Correct, understood. But, but the intent is if, if we decide as a group of seven that we are not going to be at our best in providing the service to the folks during the work session, we can let them know now so those folks can go home. And without them, we will convene the work session and state that we need to reschedule. So did I have that correct, Adam? Okay, so I'm looking to y'all for, you know, yes to.
Yes to keep going or no?
Uh, so we are going to keep going on this. What I'm asking for is, uh, this is bring on the whole work session to know I would prefer to not have the work session other than our minimum, we need to reschedule the work session. I want to have the works, they, they've been here the whole time. So trying to get, so John, where, where are you at? You're, you're a continue with the work session?
Sorry, guys.
All right, might, might be a late one. Okay, thank you.
I just want to be dismissive of the three hours they've spent in the audience.
All right, so, so to that end, I do recognize we have been here three hours. So I'd ask for all of us, I know we are getting a, a little slow and tired. I hope our break took care of that. But for us, as we have comments, let's do our best to be succinct and not repetitive. All right, so with that, Councilmember Cox mentioned, oh, let's please not skip over plan of operation. We have questions about that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think that there's a couple of items in here that I'd like to address. One of them is, and we spoke about this early on in the meeting, prior to the meeting. And is plan of operation required? I have one question. Do they currently have to do a plan of operation when they apply? So this is all new, and this is not covered in the state statute. This is... Oh, man, I did not want you to say that. All right. So, I mean, I will be moving at some point in one of these week readings to strike this completely. But for now, I'd like to make a motion that we include J, I had to do the alphabet really quick, that says no changes to the plan of operation, or somehow they have an option there that they don't have to do an entire operational plan, that there would be some kind of like a other, you know, no, no, no operational changes on renewal. I mean, I would certainly, I'm, for lack, or because of time, I would like to add that language in here, and then I want to hear from them on Thursday, this plan of operation description, and I also want to hear from our staff who will be monitoring this.
Okay, so if I can help wordsmith.
Please.
So a J would be the option to note on renewal, no changes or updates?
Yes. That would be my motion.
Okay, so moved by Councilmember Cox.
Mayor, may I make a friendly amendment to that? Can we just at the beginning of it, strike renewal, renewed? So any license authorized under this chapter shall not be issued or transferred? And then it just doesn't apply to renewal? Because I think the intent of that. But I think if we say shall not be issued or renewed, and then J, you don't have to do it at renewal, it's going to get confusing.
Okay. Do you accept friendly amendment? Okay, so move to strike renewed by Councilmember Cox. We have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stubble? Call for the question, Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Anything else on that page? Okay, let's move, move to the biggie here. So a lot of thoughts have been put forward from eliminating total to having two different tracks to changing who is, who is responsible for the fine. And let's just stay with that part first for B before we get into the consequences part, try to keep those separate. And I'm, I'm curious if this is, do we have concrete suggestions that we can add here now? Or is this something that council members would like to engage in dialogue with license holders on Thursday before making changes to it?
I would suggest that we do that. We hear from the.
The latter?
License holders, yes.
Okay. What do other council members think?
You're, you're asking about specific recommendations for the.
Yeah, I mean, either, you know, are we at a point where we can, I mean, I, I think we agree, we've heard from folks that this needs work? Do we have specifics to amend it right now? Or is this something that we can provide amendments on the second reading after license holders, license holders have a chance to share their thoughts in more detail on Thursday's meeting?
So, not an amendment, but asking for clarification from some of the staff members. On the type of violations, some of those are in state statute, right? Some of them are active. Right? So kind of like I asked before the, the break, you know, clearly delineating on record here in the room or the audience, which of those, they already are held, are held to those standards? And which ones are then added? And then perhaps after we clarify that, then those state statutes, looking specifically at Chief there, who and how are those enforced, you know, those state statutes, you know?
I, I can go first because I did, it's a good thing we've got computers. I did do the research on that. There is a statute for serving or selling alcoholic beverages to intoxicated persons. That's why we make statute 128301. Selling or giving or delivering alcohol to anyone under the age of 21 is 126101. And those are misdemeanors punishable by $750 fine, six months in jail or both. Those are the only ones.
Mayor, can I add to this discussion? Because I think Councilman Cassidy, I'm so glad you brought this up, but I want to make sure we're clear that this, what you just mentioned, and this is part of the comments we had. Where their state statute sale to a minor, that means that server who sells to an 18-year-old will be ticketed if we're called and find out, right? So there's a criminal offense there and a, and an action taken to the individual responsible for that point of sale that is unauthorized. Now, what we're adding here is a system of fines and or demerits against a license holder whose establishment is unintentionally likely, right, allowing patterns of these types of individual actions happen. So this is where we set in systematic accountability at the system and operations level in addition to the individual action level that we already have tools for on some of the, what is already defined as criminal by the state. So we've, we heard pieces of like, why are, you know, don't do it against the owners if you're not doing it against individuals. We still will ticket servers who serve to minors. Absolutely. Now, if we have an establishment where serving to a minor is a consistent activity and he's documented as happening five times a year, worst case scenario, right? We want to be able to now through this have some degree of accountability to the license holder to ask and, and, you know, hopefully enforce, why, what is the environment that you are allowing to occur in this establishment? That you have repeated violations of these laws from your staff? So a distinction you want to draw there?
Yeah, thank you. That's an important distinction to make.
Additionally to that, if I found this correctly, in the state statute says, quote, "The license holder is responsible for all operations under the license, including acts of employees, agents, or representatives." That's state statute, right? So whether they're on the premises or not, they're still, they're, they're licensed, they're the license holder. There's a state that holds them accountable for that.
So if the state already holds them accountable for that, why should we?
They hold them, it's my understanding they hold them through, which was my question, and how they police this?
So in full transparency, I think it would help to understand not to be arbitrary towards the license holders. A lot of these state statutes that are put into place, this is ran through the Department of Revenue. They do not enforce any of this. We have reached out to them. Here, I've reached out to the members to ask for their insistence in enforcing these things. And it's forever given back to us that you are the licensee, so it's your duty to enforce these things. To me, it makes it muddy if we refer to state statute that they're not going to enforce, but require us to enforce. If we're going to do this as the city and it's on our books, it should be our baby, not theirs.
Which I would have to.
Oh, sorry, help, I'm sorry.
It's just a tough one to hold. The license holder, if they're not making the mistake, you know, say, I mean, who's to say it's, it's just like one of the members in the audience spoke. If you have a grievance with an employee and they purposely sell to a minor to get to the license holder because of that grievance, you know, that's not, that's not fair to the license holder. And, and then we have to make a determination off of that. Who's, you know, I don't, I don't like that at all. It's open to, it's open to too many, um, too many options. There's so many things, I think the person selling the alcohol to a minor or over serving whatever you guys, you know, whatever you see there, I think it should be on that person. Well, and I think in, Councilman Han, if I'm being clear, I guess my understanding is that it's, they are going to be held accountable, the bad actor, no matter what, right? At the point where we, as the city, would move towards the license holder would be multiple and subsequent offenses that they're not correcting.
would be multiple and subsequent offenses that they're not correcting the behavior.
Then we should do away with the demerit points and just go off of that system.
Well, that's your choice. I'm just telling you, that's how, that's my perception of how it is. And, and that's my perception, and that's how the Lander Police Department will operate as long as I'm around. Our intent is to never jump, right? Especially, I'll use Ron's name, because he brought it up and we've spoke. My intent is to never go knock on his door and now say, hey, guess what? You had a bad actor, here's your ticket too. That's not the intent behind it. The intent is, or three, four, five violations down the road. It's not getting corrected internally in the business. So now we have to come talk to you and be like, hey, you've got to fix this pattern of behavior. Our intent is never to attack the owner based on a bad actor, ever.
Right.
That's a good clarification.
Yep. And, and I think, again, if Mr. Hanson don't mind using that example, you know, heaven forbid, you've terminated that person's employment, the responsible thing to do. Heaven forbid you had another employee who likewise acted out poorly. And again, you know, this is assuming a whole lot of domino effects of ifs, ifs, ifs. And it came to the point where Mr. Hanson needed to come before counsel. I would certainly hope that we would hear what he explained today of, here, here's the, the background story of it. And we would say, wow, thanks for sharing that with us. Thanks for being a responsible owner and terminating the employment of these bad actors. End of story.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to strike B possibly on, on this then, because it says violation categories and demerits. Upon the first offense, there shall be a written warning, and obviously a fine upon the, the person causing the issue, which shall be addressed by the liquor license holder within 30 days. A fine is set forth below shall be imposed upon a second or subsequent offenses. So that would be a fine on the person causing the issue or the license holder. And then it says demerit points shall be assessed as set forth beyond, uh, below upon first and subsequent offenses. So that, that's not what we just talked about.
And can I point something out real quick? So the city can only do stuff against, stuff, that's not a good legal term, but you get what I'm saying.
How about take actions?
Can do stuff against the license holder, not against the individual bad actor. Because we don't have any jurisdiction over them unless they commit a criminal act that's a violation of Wyoming statute. So for example, if they sell to underage constituents, then the police can go and cite that individual, right? So the council, under the criminal code, the council, though, can only assess these fines to the license holder, because that's the only jurisdiction you have. Because this is civil. So if you have a bad actor, like a bartender who's selling to people, the city can't say, oh, that's that guy's fault, we're going to fine him. It doesn't work that way, because we don't have jurisdiction, because they aren't license holders. And that's what the council has jurisdiction over, is the licensees. They're the license holders.
Well, the license holder shouldn't get punished by somebody that's...
And I don't know, I'm just telling you what the distinction is between the two.
Sure, and I'm just, I'm speaking my mind. I don't think the license holder should be punished for something that's, you know, that the individual selling to a minor or doing wrong, breaking the law per se, should be held accountable. The owner, I mean, you can't, you can't keep your thumb on somebody all the time. You don't know exactly what they're doing. All you can do is have trust in who you're hiring, and, you know, say they sign a contract or something saying, if you do this, you're gone. You know, and that covers your butt in a way, but, you know, you read, you read B on the violation categories and demerits, that doesn't correlate with what we're saying and hearing.
So I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from with your concern. And to a, to a certain degree, I agree with you. But I think that there's a couple of things in the state statute that caused me to break away from you a little bit, although there's some close concerns that you have. One, there's a state statute that says all license holders will understand state, the laws and rules. That one. The second one, it says that they will comply with all provisions. And there's also a state statute that says they are ultimately responsible for everything that happens under their license. Whether they're on, on the location or not, whether they're present or not, they are ultimately responsible. Now, it's my understanding that enforcement of that is challenged at the state. And the state has then kind of shoved that off to the municipalities, which, which grant the license. So now we have to determine, unfortunately, whether we are going to abide by state statute and hold those people accountable for everything that happens under their license or not. That's difficult. That's the crux of what we're talking about, I think. And I understand very well some of the comments that were brought up today about, hey, you know, we can have bad actors, we can have people that can come in, and they can, they can just sling Jack and Cokes to whomever they want, and then I'm held accountable for that? How can I be held accountable for that? But ultimately, the state of Wyoming has, has made the, you know, the statute's saying that, yes, you are accountable for that. You set the operational culture inside of that organization. And, and that's the crux, that's the difficulty, you know?
I'm looking at this, so that's like, I don't know if you have children or not, but I have children. So that's like my teenager go out and get in trouble or something, and then me getting punished for him being a knucklehead, right? Like, that, that makes no sense to me at all.
And it, I, I hear what you're saying, and it's...
Because I'm responsible for them.
Yes.
And I'm responsible for their actions, but I can't keep around them 24/7. And if they go out and wreak havoc or whatever they do, which mine does not, thank God, but...
Well, the...
You know, it's like, I'd be held accountable for something he's doing.
Yeah. And again, I, I'm hearing both sides of these, and I think the difference is, as challenging is from the parental standpoint, you are not legally obligated for that. And what Councilwoman Cassidy is saying is, by applying for and accepting a liquor license, you, the liquor license holder is assuming I am now responsible for all actions that take place under there, under that license in the building. And I, I know I said, maybe only talk about B and not C. So I'm going to break that, owning it. I would wonder if changing the point thresholds for each of these different stat, kind of penalties would help alleviate that, that it would show more grace to, gosh, you know, we, we fired that person, hired another one, that person turned out to be a knucklehead. I am trying, here's my plan of operation, here's all the things I do for this. Great, you're doing your level best. And so changing the, the point threshold of which having to have a more formal next step grants more leeway to the liquor license holder.
And if you, I agree, and if you look at purpose under, under A, it says in order to deter violations of state and local liquor laws, encourage voluntary compliance, and provide a framework for escalating enforcement actions when needed, right? So we're, we're not looking at a, a no-fail mission where it's a cliff edge, and you, you, you have an error, you run into a problem with an employee, and you fall off the cliff. We're not looking for that. And if the demerit system, as it's written currently in version 1.0, unintentionally creates that, we need to change it. You know, I, I, and I, so I agree with you that if, if unintentionally we create a circumstance where someone cannot survive that, it needs to be modified. You know, but I, I stand by what I said earlier about, you know, the state statute and how that's, that's enforced.
Yes.
So can we live on a fine system without a demerit system? Can we, can we live on a fine system, whatever that may be? And, and that's what we have been doing. Can we live with that and accomplish what we want? I, I think we can.
Who's getting the fine? Hmm? Who's getting the fine? The bad actor, the...
The license holder.
Well, the, the...
Back to the same thing.
I would say you do both after the second time. You, you do the first one, the person that's causing the problem. If that person is still there, or the problem persists, you know, continues.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about who got fined. I was just staying with the fine system.
Then you, I think finding somebody, if you take their money, it opens their eyes, right? Because money's kind of hard to get. And taking their business affects more than just the owner. That affects families that spider web below them, right? You take their liquor license, they're probably going to lose their job or their business. If they lose their business, all the people that umbrella underneath them lose everything. That's investors in that business, that's banks.
I understand that, but I don't think we're looking at trying to...
One, one person at a time talking.
Well, a, a fine, a fine system makes sense. You're not ruining somebody's livelihood, you're opening their eyeballs to a problem, right? You're not, you're not potentially harming that many families. If you, you know, if you, if you put them on a demerit system, and for some reason, they acquire the certain amount of points that it takes to take their license, that, that affects a ton of people versus the person causing the problem and the license holder. That's what I look at. It's families involved, and investors, and banks, and everybody, you know, it's, it's more than just a couple of people that it affects. That's, you've got to look at the big picture, not just, this is doing wrong. We're going to do this to them, and then it affects all the people below them that are harmless, that didn't do anything. Right?
Councilman Larson.
Well, like, like I say, I, I don't think that we're trying to, to close anybody's business. And well, but look at it, Josh, you know, if, i- it's doing just exactly what we've been talking about here the whole time, is that there's, after so much time, there, there's some incentive that, that goes back to the, the license holder, that says, you know, you need to, you need to, to straighten things up here. And it is, we're, we're not going in there, you know, with the, with, with swords and bayonets fixed and, and trying to, you know, take the, take their legs out from under them. We're, we're giving them these, these opportunities to, to get the things straightened up. You know, I, I think we're saying the same thing, Josh.
Because there's no set amount, that's why we're trying to work through this. We're trying to create something better for everybody.
So, hearing, hearing this, I want to try to make some suggestions that y'all have to make a motion and, and so on. So, first one I would suggest, on section B, the last sentence, "Demerit points shall be assessed as set forth below upon second and subsequent offenses," instead of first. So again, my thought is, how do we create a little bit of grace and corrective time for our business owners?
Mayor, I can get behind that. We're doing that with the fine already. That's second and subsequent, not first. And I think why that's compelling enough to me is that what we're after here, what I really want to solve for is, is patterns of behavior.
Systemic patterns.
Right, exactly. Not one-offs. And so if the demerits start to accrue at the second and subsequent, and then I think the next logical place that you might be going is, let's look at the thresholds.
Correct.
But I, I want to say one thing while I'm here, is, because I think we're debating like, if demerits at all. And for me, one reason to maintain a demerit system, perhaps slow down when they're applied, perhaps look at the thresholds at which they lead to other actions, is that they give us a quantifiable framework to keep us accountable before we go to hearings, and before we go to possible court action. And it, frankly, I think that's a safeguard that's worth talking about for the business owners if we were to pursue court action around the license itself. And so there, I think we heard about, don't suspend, don't revoke. I think we should talk one about those authorities eventually, so let's flag that, we need to get to there. But part of the demerit system that I like is that it's at least measurable, clear, and quantifiable for all parties to hold each other accountable to say, we're not going to just say, what about suspension today? I don't know, is it bad enough? You know, how many times has happened? We say, oh, look, we set out a system, you have 20 points over 24 months, you know, whatever. You know, we can't go before 20 points. This person's not demonstrated a pattern yet to get to possible suspension hearing. So there's a safeguard there I want to say out loud here, too. So your point about, though, back to that amendment you just proposed, or didn't propose, but throughout there for us, of B, the last sentence, "Demerit points shall be assessed as set forth below upon second and subsequent," I would move that change.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Stubble. Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
And seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. We had a call for the question, Councilmember...
I do have a discussion point really quick, just to clarify. So the one, I mean, there's a lot of things within this that are going to be changed, potentially, within the next few readings. The one that I'm really struggling with is the controlled substance violation.
So, so we're just talking about changing, oh, oh, you...
Yeah, we are.
Controlled substance, and having a fine on the first one.
Well, well, it's a fine and...
Demerit points.
Demerit points. And that one I'm struggling with in including. That one's a little bit of a, a little more of a nuanced one. It's an automatic, I mean, it's 50 and then 100, you know?
So perhaps we exempt the controlled substance violations from, that's treated differently. All others are second and, second and subsequent. That one is first and subsequent, because we don't want, and this again, is licensees, agencies, and employees convicted of illegally distributing or possessing controlled substances.
Yeah, okay.
I think that it's worth going more severe than that.
Well, no, not necessarily. I'm just, I'm concerned about the licensee. I mean, I, I don't know, this might come as a big surprise to some of you, but there are people that deal drugs in bars. And I would guess that most of the owners aren't aware of it. In some, I mean, that's going to make my assumption. And to get them that significant of a demerit, based on something that they are not aware of, concerns me.
So getting them, the 50 points.
I'm sorry.
So licensee being unaware of an action of someone would receive a 50 point.
And then second subsequent could be 100, which means, as it reads now, revocation and suspension.
I have...
Potentially.
I have to question the premise here that, because this is very specific. It's the licensee, agency, or employees convicted of dealing drugs, selling drugs, on the licensed premises.
Yeah, it happens.
So, but I, I don't run a business. I question why a business owner would not be aware of that. And what, what kind of establishment are they running that they're unaware of? Drugs being dealt by their employees on there.
I'll give you an anecdotal example that I watched happen and, and aware of. And it's not based on my profession. That there's a bartender who is known to sell drugs outside in the community, right? And we're just going about our business, being legal, law-abiding citizens. And we don't really know what that looks like. And so they go up to the bar, and they make their order, and then they're like, and also, I'll have... So said person goes out to their car, they collect their thing, and they make the transaction. There is absolutely no way that the owner of that business knows that's happening. And once they do, they're going to correct it. But, but it happens, happens frequently. You take a joint, I mean, you could go right now to a bar and purchase a joint, maybe from an employee. I know you could, actually, probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think being aware of that, and then it happens, and then there's a correctable, you know, there's a criminal charge that happens to the person that's doing it, then the employer becomes aware, and they're going to take care of it. I would, but I would certainly hate for them to shut, have a suspension or a revocation based on, though, that's, that's troubling to me. So I'd like to take that out, because we need more time to delve into that and what that looks like.
Madam Mayor.
So, I, I'm sorry, I, I know you would love to speak, and I'm going to ask you to hold until Thursday, because it's going long enough. And if we open it for you, everyone needs to be able to come speak, and we'll be here until 2:00 in the morning. Thank you for understanding, Mr. Bailey. So, yes. So we're still, still discussing this particular amendment.
Well, yeah, but it, it has something to do with what I was thinking with. You're talking about, and you're talking about demerits. What, 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 what might help the situation is to have a situation with the demerits, where we have maybe, maybe it's, it's, it's $2,000 or $3,000 worth of fines, a set, a set amount of fines that people land on, and then it kicks them over into the demerit, which, which would, would,
people land on, and then it kicks them over into the demerit, which, which would, 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 i- if there's a, if there's a problem, maybe they can get a handle on it, and that, that gives a little buffer, um, because I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a fan of the, I'm, I'm, I'd much rather stay with the, with fines, but if we're gonna go to, into demerits, at least let's have a, a buffer there where they have time to try to, you know, save themselves if you have some crazy, you know, selling drugs in the parking lot or whatever that is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. So a couple of thoughts there. Um, one, I wanna remind all of us, us and folks there, that a hearing does not mean a license holder is going to lose, be revoked or suspended. That is only the next step in the process, that they would then go to a district court again to be heard, and the licensed owner has the opportunity to state why that is, uh, revocation or suspension is not appropriate. So I wanna, wanna make sure we're all on board with that, because we're, we're slipping into that language of, you sell to an underage minor twice and you lose your license, that is not a given. So I wanna make sure we're, we're not jumping to conclusions for that.
But could it be a possibility? Could it be a possibility? If, if, if something can be a possibility, then you can't say that. You, you have to, you, I mean, it's not 100%. So what I'm saying is, is you have language in here, I'll go along with that. If we can come up with, I mean, I, I can live with that.
So let me, let me continue. So you're right, it is a possibility, I don't think it's a probability, and we are, we are stating it as a certainty. I just want us to be careful with our language on that. I also wanna bring us back to, we have an amend, um, an amendment to discuss, and a natural second part of that is what I'm hearing from folks, is that, um, see the demerit thresholds, uh, that changing the points at which the next steps could come into place is another place where we can create, um, time and protocol for the licensed owner to make those changes without moving to the next step. So I wanna go back to, um, I don't, if you wanna make, try to make a, a amendment, uh, or correct your initial amendment with, um, exempting the controlled substance violation.
Not yet, Mayor. I think, I think I propose, let's vote on the motion, which is to, uh, demerits get assessed at second and subsequent, and then we need to deal with controlled substances separately. I think there's a much larger conversation perhaps for that one than we did. So if we, if, so I think there's consensus on demerits at second and subsequent at this stage as a change, so why don't we try that vote, Mayor, and then edit out controlled substances if we need to separately.
Okay, let's try that, starting with Councilmember Han. So this is, so.
Yeah, I.
Fair enough.
It's so confusing.
So what we're, what we're voting on, a positive vote means that we will change that last sentence to demerit points shall be assessed as set forth upon second and subsequent offenses, not on the first.
I don't like the demerits at all, but I'll vote yes on it, cause this is the first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see more space here, too.
Councilman Han, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Thank you for hanging in there, folks. All right, so in terms of managing the controlled substance, Councilmember Cox, is that something you wanna take a stab at?
This one's difficult. This one's really difficult. Um. One, I think that the fine is set forth here as $1,000, the controlled substance violation is defined below $1,000. And I know the serious nature of this, this is nothing that should be taken lightly. Um, the $1,000 threshold is also a high misdemeanor threshold, is that still correct in the ordinance, $1,000 fine and a, a year in jail is a controlled substance? So that follows aligned with that, even though that's going to the licensee. Uh, my concern is the, the punitive nature of, of this. So I would like us to reconsider the demerit points. The, the problem that I'm having currently of offering any suggestions is, this is gonna be something that is gonna, I would like to take some time with this. On the second reading, I will have a much better explanation and, um, input for how I'd like to see it happen versus, uh, addressing it right now.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I think that it, I think it should be struck from Title II. Um, drugs and alcohol are adjacent, but this is our, this is our policy specifically regarding alcohol. Um, the comments I made earlier about, you know, owning and operating your business as a license holder, that's, that's a license to sell alcohol. If there's illegal activity happening with your employees that is outside of alcohol, it doesn't belong in this title, in my opinion. Um, you know, they can, they can, uh, sell drugs at Fremont Motors, they can sell drugs at Ace Hardware, they can sell them all over the, over the state, all over the town and the state, and we, we don't, I don't believe that we do anything like this elsewhere, you know, uh, they are adjacent activities, they are separate and distinct activities, that should be struck.
Okay, is that amendment you're making?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Second.
So, moved by Councilmember Cassidy, seconded by Councilmember, uh, Josh Han.
It's a good one.
So, any other discussion on that?
Mayor, I'm gonna be a no vote on that, just cause I want to, I wanna think about it, hear about it, and think about this one a little bit more. I might get there in the end, but I, this, uh, Councilwoman Cox, the scenario you just set up, that it's very easy to go get a joint at a bar right now, tells me there's a problem solved in our city. And so I, I struggle, if we take it out now, are we not gonna solve it? When are we gonna take that? So maybe eventually I'll get there, Councilman Cassidy, but I wanna keep it in here for now for future debate.
Okay, thank you. Any other, before, okay, Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, that will be stricken. Okay, can we move down to demerit thresholds and consequences? Cause this is a place where I think we can, um, increase the, the first threshold, uh, and expand these a little bit, again, to give more opportunity for our license holders that we know, almost, you know, they want to do the right thing, and gives them a chance to do that, so.
Like a dollar amount?
Uh, no, so this is like a cumulative demerits, so again, I don't get to make amendments, but I would suggest something like if one of you wanted to take notes and, you know, either copy it or, or add your own, but, uh, so within the 24 month period, the first, instead of 10 to 14, would be 25 to 50 points, 51 to 75, and then over 76. Is, and more on the philosophical note is, what I'm looking for is, it gives a little more latitude for our, our license holders to be addressing internally, um, the culture of their organization and how they train, train employees.
Mayor, I'm looking, I'm willing to look at changing those thresholds, but I question the 25 to 50 before, so 50 and above is the first hearing for a potential seven day suspension. So that could equal five sales to minors, that could equal five over service to a toxic person. Five starts to tell me, that feels like a pattern.
Maybe 49?
Well, or.
You're not five, you're, yeah.
So, uh, again, to the question of the night, I'm a little like, I almost wanna do this one real in depth on Thursday with everybody, um, before making a ton of change tonight. I think there's changes to the thresholds tonight, I think there's more time to think about it perhaps, but I can, I can, you can count me as a, let's look hard at changing the thresholds. That feels a little like we're letting a lot slide on, on what's happening inside some of these establishments, or even bringing in a hearing about why.
Okay, so, so not an interest in changing the point thresholds at this point, other than to let our license owners know, we are willing to hear a different threshold. Okay. Councilmember Cassidy.
Just running back up to the top of page 10 there under purpose, the last thing, I just wanna bring this back up, is that the aim that we're, that we're shooting for is to, uh, the very end of that sentence is to provide a framework for escalating enforcement actions when needed, right? Um, it's very important to me that with the business owners here, um, one of the lessons of my previous life is that you have to survive errors and mistakes, right? So we have to create this system, if we do wanna create this system, it has to be such that they can survive, uh, errors, right? Um, if you wanna call that, giving them a, a buffer or grace or whatever, but they, they must be able to survive. So I would suggest or recommend that we listen to them, so they can clearly articulate to us if they would like to, what that looks like, feels like, sounds like, what is survivable, what's not survivable, and then we take that, we take that, and then we go into version 2.0 with a clearer picture from their point of view of what is survivable and what's not survivable, and that we just kind of hit pause on demerit numbers, quantities, et cetera, until then.
Sounds, sounds good. I, uh, again, I think, um, I was trying to provide numbers in an effort to create some kind of, um, different structure, but I think we're agreed on the philosophy. We'll listen to folks on Thursday, and, um, for folks in the room, we are, um, willing to consider that. So, okay, so I, I don't wanna make assumptions, but I believe that is the, the biggest, big part of where there are things, that, you know, there's some formatting, that type of stuff. And I do believe one of the things that came up was clarifying, um, when we have a response within a certain number of days, to clarify that that should be specified as business days, so we can just make that, we, we hear that, and, um, I'm, I'm not gonna make that an amendment at this point, um, cause I'd love for us to move on. Are we good with that, to move on to our next topic?
Mayor, you know I'm gonna do this. I can hear what Monty is saying right now. I do, there's one clarification I wanna make that came up in public comment while we're on the topic. Um, I think we've heard a lot about, uh, fines, not suspension and revocation, and I, I'm not sure, I might be mishearing it, but I wanna say just in case, we're not creating, this, these changes are not creating the possibility of suspension or revocation of licenses. One, that's an existing code right now. It's not at all clearly spelled out what we would do or what standards we'd use to get to that point, and that is a state granted authority to us in managing these licenses. So, um, I'm taking seriously your points of like, that is dire, that is the death of a business perhaps. I hear that, I'm gonna take that seriously, and it's not, um, it's not an authority we're creating in this change, we have it now. We've understood that we have very little, like, in the last year, um, standards for how we would perhaps consider that. And, and actually, to your point, Mayor, actually, we have that authority to pursue court action to consider that, and the court would then be the ultimate arbiter on our recommendation to pursue suspension or revocation, not us. So, to your point, and we wanna keep saying that, but it's not new to this, um, what's new is setting ourselves standards for what we would want to reach and see patterns before we get to the possibility of a hearing to possibly recommend suspension or revocation of an authority that the state has already granted us and that we have today if we so chose to use it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for clearing. So, in short, currently what we have is the, um, uh, vague standards for that next step, and we're trying to make it cleaner. Um, I would actually ask, so this can be one of the simple housekeeping things, uh, for someone to make an amendment to note that anytime there is communication between the city and a license holder, that it's specified to be business days. So.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Larson. Councilmember second. And so moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Uh, call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Mayor.
Awesome, that, yes.
I would, uh, propose that, uh, the rest of this, we push off to diversion 2.0, and if we're gonna plow through the, the work session, let's, let's get it done at your two o'clock, uh, meeting time is, is gonna be way past two o'clock.
Yes. Can we all live with that? I think we've, we've dealt with the big ones. Awesome, thank you. And again, thank you all, I know that's, uh, and, and to our members, it's, um, somewhat like watching paint dry, and yet an important part of, um, the governing process to do that.
You, you do have to vote on it, this is the first reading, so you'll have to make a motion to accept it on first reading with, as amended.
So if someone could make that motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-13, amending Title II, sale, licensing, and use of alcoholic and malt beverages, um, with the new title. Oh, yeah, that's it, actually, revoking, replacing, and superseding ordinance 1120 and 2024-5 as amended.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, passes, uh, 42. So we have a second reading forthcoming. Thanks for keeping me on, Adam. All right, we are gonna move ahead, so, next up is item C, approve first reading of ordinance 2025-14, amending section 710-1 through 710-6, tobacco products age requirements within the city of Lander.
Moved to approve second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. I don't believe there's gonna be much discussion, if any, we'll go call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, that passes. Uh, next up, two are related, so approve resolution 1371, amending resolution, uh, 1106, appointing Lander Economic Development Association as the City of Lander Economic Development Commission. Can I get a motion in a second, please? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox and seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Uh, I'm gonna take a first stab at this, and, and then, Regine, you can fill me in if I'm not correct on this. So this started because, uh, we realized that council members should not be voting members, which led to us looking at this resolution and also recognizing that there was, um, early on, when LIDA was formed, there were a number of projects that were truly like joint projects between the city and LIDA, and it made sense to have a city member as a board member, city staff member. It also became problematic, having a, when there were, uh, different priorities between LIDA and the city, and so that's why we're also suggesting, so, whereas number one, uh, is the change, though, that council members to be a non-voting member, um, and then number two, as appropriate, provide a staff member to assist with any administrative duties during joint projects, but not have a city member, uh, staff member being a, a voting member. So those are the, the two changes there. Is that decent, so, comments, questions on that? And then likewise, this is why the MOU needs to be changed, which is the next step. Okay, so with that, um, we have a motion in a second, so Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, that passes. So for the MOU, likewise, again, what's changed in this is updating, um, this city responsibility, item three, that the council is, uh, council liaison is a non-voting member, and then, uh, the city responsibility on, I, also item three, providing a city council member as non-voting, and the staff member for administrative. So, but we should get a motion in a second for that.
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Stubble.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Call for the question.
Uh, Mayor, could you comment? Um, we just need to, housekeeping, adjust the date here, this MOU is dated this day of January 2025, so, uh, amend that to the date of, so I move that we amend this to the date of approval tonight, and then there's a term at the bottom, section two, the MOU should be enforced from, and it's blank. How long is that generally for us? Like five years, three years, what is that? I'm not sure where your last.
Adam, I think that's a question for you. So in section, um, Roman numeral two, term, this MOU shall be enforced from the date until such time as it officially rescinded or subsequently revised in writing by either party. Is that, is good?
I mean, it's, we, I don't generally like open-ended agreements. We didn't necessarily have a term, cause no one told me what the term would be for the MOU. Um, generally, we've done them for, what, a year or two, Regine? I mean, it does vary, but we do try and keep our contracts fairly short, so that if they need to be amended or modified, we aren't stuck in a contract forever. So it's.
A common practice was for four years or two years automatically removed.
The common practice was for four years or two years automatically removed for. Automatically renewed for another two years.
However, the council would like to do it.
Arbitrarily choose four years. It's LIDA, and it always has a caveat here. We can also just subsequently review in writing, so. Yeah, it's a contract. So if it's not arbitrary, then I'd say she'll be enforced for a term of four years from the date of enactment. And I'll make that an amendment to this MOU, Mayor.
Okay, so we have an amendment to change the the date to this day of October. And to change the term to be. Enforced for four years from today's date of enactment for the terms. Okay, that's moved by Councilmember Stubble. We get a second on the amendment.
Second.
So seconded by Councilmember Larson. Let's vote on the amendment, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay, and now let's vote on the whole shebang. Starting with Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we have next up, approved customer requested work agreement between the City of Lander and Rocky Mountain Power for work order number. Seven four five nine nine five eight one in the amount of two thousand eight hundred ninety one dollars. Get a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson and seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Lance, give us the skinny, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the pole that's in the fence at the park. We need to have it relocated so that it's not a safety hazard.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Last up, approve Lincoln Street Project Change Order Number Two, increasing the contract price by. One thousand, one hundred thirty four thousand, six hundred ninety seven dollars and ninety five cents. And the days to completion by thirty two days plus winter. Once again, a motion in a second, please. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox and seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Lance, give us the skinny again here, please.
Sure, Mayor and Council. As you know, this project was supposed to be done at this point in time. What we're looking at it for the increased price is all the way through the end of the job on owner directed changes. So a lot of this is slurry sealing in between pipes that was not. In the original contract when we're less than eighteen inches between the water and sewer pipes. So a protection being offered, that's at sixty two thousand. There were additional services that were requested. We don't want to be having the street dug back up, so we. Put the message out on the individual lots. What do we need to add those? So those are an additional. Add to this contract as well, as well as other things that we've run into along the way to this point in time. So the price adjustment isn't being fully paid at this time. It's creating the pay items. So that they can be paid. I'm hoping in this seven million dollar job that, you know, we're pretty close to seeing all the unknowns, getting the adjustments on the elevations, have worked through. Things in the contract that weren't there and have means and methods figured out. Right now, what the time means is that, hey, there's usually a winter shutdown or would have been. Had we moved forward on this job, thinking that there was going to be another year added. We weren't anticipating that. So at this point in time, for them to be able to work through the rest of this fall and get good working days, work in the spring if they were to get good working days. We're saying, hey, that's a low cost or no cost time for us. I would be the one out in the field during those times. We wouldn't be paying additional engineering, so you're not paying services. Or limited services to your engineering group until you get good working days again next spring. The added days would be added after that April first, when everybody would be coming back saying, hey, that's fair. To get the total number of days added and then put them into penalty for liquidated damages after that. So they're aware that. We were going to assess damages if they don't get the job completed by mid-May is what we're looking at. Most likely, this is going until August of next year. So there is going to be a deduction to pay for engineering is what we're suggesting as we sat down and talked about this. For not getting the job done in the two years that we originally designated. Again, we didn't pay for engineering in the time that they weren't working, so they basically took that year off. So we have budget for our engineering. But they didn't meet the contract times. Engineers are probably going to ask for an increased pay amount. You know, this covers us and our additional costs. Doesn't get the job done any faster. Where we are this year is trying to push pavement to be paved on the blocks that are torn up right now. So they extended the water line today to to the Sixth Street, so pretty confident between Fifth and Sixth, as long as we have good weather, will be paved. We have a ditch conflict that we're working out with Century Link. That I'm hoping by tomorrow will have a plan. I was on site today, working through with the engineering group and the contractor, saying. Let's adjust this. Let's get the everything extended so we can build boxes and get this thing paved too. So the goal is to use these days or winter shutdown days as long as the pavement. Plant is open to push paving to be done. If not, we'll address what that means. They've already been talking to businesses about not getting paved. Want to prepare you if weather doesn't cooperate. You know, it's not the scenario that we want, but it might be the scenario we have to deal with.
Councilman on.
Yeah, I, this is, this is really confusing to me because. They they signed the contract in August. And they chose not to try to open anything up in a fall. And they they signed a contract that that. That says that they're going to be. Substantially complete October thirty first, and they're going to be complete December thirty first. And they also, in the contract, says that the the contract further agrees to pay liquidated damage to the sum of fifteen hundred dollars. For the the each calendar day. I understand weather days and I understand the. The the extra days, but. Shouldn't they be getting, shouldn't they be getting penalized? In, in, yeah, well, December, so January, shouldn't they be getting penalized? You know, like in February, start paying their their. By rights as the contract states?
Yes, I mean, I think what you're saying is should we hold liquidated damages for the calendar days? Over the winter that they can't necessarily work. And so, you know, when you, you can't have them out there finishing the job if you were to, and I'm. Not the attorney, so we might have to get him involved in some of this discussion as well. But when we're talking about actual damages and liquidated damages. You're going to be asked what you were out during that time. If they're not working and they were. At a winter shutdown and you're not actually being damaged and you end up in a lawsuit over this. You know, I think that's what we're saying. Is it reasonable to give them a grace period during a winter shutdown and say, pause the contract? Because nobody can be working or finishing the job. Assessing liquidated damages during that time is a penalty that they can't get out there and finish the job during that time.
Why would you write that, Ben?
Because it was supposed to be done at October thirty first. And so at this point, if you had good working days or extended your contract. We're dealing with winter shutdown, having to decide what you want to do as council. So you could take a, you know, a different stance on this and not approve it. I think my recommendation is you're going to be in liquidated damages next year during the working calendar when the job can actually be performed. So you're, I mean, nobody's going to be paving roads in the the winter. I mean, it just, you don't have good paving days for it.
Did they start late?
Yeah, they didn't get going for almost the first year that they could have been working.
Yeah, I don't.
So so if it's a, if it's a contract that they've signed with a final end date, right?
Right.
And then they, they can start whenever they choose, as long as they achieve that outcome that they've signed the contract to. And if they start late.
So we had a days because of owner directed work, right? So there's an amount of time on October thirty first of saying. Hey, you encountered these issues or whatever it may be. Those impacted your critical path. So that time is awarded. So we are giving them or saying there's thirty two, thirty two days here. For that impact that they are due. So that would have been October thirty first to essentially November. But now you're. You're at the point where they're not finishing the job and you have to decide what you want to do. Like during those times, they're not going to. Finish the job and you have a contractor who isn't able to do it.
Well, but in in most instances. People have enough crew to do the job in the time they're gonna do. That's what I don't understand. And to tell you the truth. The the real confusing thing here is if you look at the contract, it blows my mind. Alexander was Mobe and D Mobe was twenty five thousand. And they live in town here and and their Mobe and D Mobe was six hundred ninety five thousand. And a and a contractor in in Montana that bid it was a million. So. They were almost three quarters of a million dollars and they live here. I I just, this this whole thing. I mean, I I just, doesn't make sense to me. They didn't start when they should have and 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 they didn't complete it because everything is going too slow.
Sure, I mean, I'm happy to, we brought this to you as a suggestion for a change to. Try to to make it work, but if you have a suggestion of the change that you would like to make, we can go back and. Suggest that. So if you want to put them in penalty earlier or the council wants to do something different, that's entirely up to you.
No, no, I I just, I just. I guess they do things different. When I, when, when, when I was in penalty penalty in business, we, it cost us. We had to be on time and so, anyway, thank you. Thank you for that, Lance. I just, I just don't.
This kind of sets a precedence for the city, though. If you're allowing one person to slide on a contract. Then, you know, it's to be expected for other people to look at it like, hey, we can, we can work at our own leisure and and. You know, they won't hammer down.
Sure.
You know.
And I, and I think that's what I really struggled with is the precedence we've set in the past. Has been to work with the contractors and we have extended their contracts. So if you want to start setting the penalties, I don't think you can be lenient. From here on out with other contractors. You know, the Metron job is not done on time. We're not assessing LDs on that. You know, the other jobs that we've had, I mean, the tank and pump station, the original job went over a year. And there weren't penalties assessed on that one. So I guess just trying to be fair to what we've done in the past and, you know, it. It is that like local business idea, you know, don't be arbitrary and capricious, as Adam would say, be fair across the board on how you want to. Assess these damages to local business. I know they're late and behind. This is the first time that we will be recommending to assess LDs on a contract. And so we're recommending for probably several months next year to penalize them.
And and you've had that conversation with them. They know it's coming and, yeah, so, and appreciate you that. I'm sure they were not the most comfortable conversations to have. So so for my mind, I just want to clarify, basically, the the thirty two days is saying, hey, there were things that happened that were not anticipated. And it's us as the City of Lander saying, that slowed you down by thirty two days. So I'm going to play fair and share by that. Okay, just want to clarify that. And then, so if we were to not increase the contract price. And I'll give over the extra thirty two days, what happens next? Are they going to continue working into November?
No, they're gonna try to, you know, preserve their time and request a winter shutdown because they don't. Believe they can be productive or accomplish.
Okay.
What they need to. They're going to conserve. Their days or working days to try to come back and be effective when they're able to perform.
So if we were to not pass this, then we have the impact of unpaved. Streets for probably two blocks until sometime in the spring.
Correct.
Impact on.
Actually, actually, you could amend it if you want. It's not the thirty, that's, I'm not complaining about thirty two days. It's like weather days. You know, I did they have? Did they have ninety weather days this year?
No.
No. So what you do is you, they said that they were going to be done by the thirty first or or December thirty first. So they're supposed to be done then. Now you added thirty two days, so you go into January. That what I'm talking about is on most jobs. In between that end of that, what you added, from there to when they start, actually, from there to when they. Finish the job. They should be fined. And to me. For somebody to, for somebody to come up to bid a job or or write, somebody to sign documents that says they have noticed or proceed. In August of two thousand twenty four, they don't start until. The spring of twenty five and they're, and they say in their contract, well, we'll do the best we can. And they're supposed to, they're supposed to get the job done. If you don't get the job done. Then from from the time you're supposed to, from to the time you complete the job, you're supposed to be paying the money. In my. In my view, just looking at things the way. The way I see it. The money is there. They they they, their Mobe and D mode, Mobe is three quarters of a million dollars. That. That'll pay for four hundred days of work past what you went. That's, that's, that's what I don't understand here. I I I just. The way things work and the way things are happening here, that doesn't make sense. But my point was. I wasn't complaining about thirty two days because that's standard operating procedure. And and weather days are are are, but you know, all the little things and the problems. I mean, they had the most money in in. In taking equipment and and trying to discover whatever they needed to discover. I mean, you know what I mean, when they're searching for things underground? And so they they had a lot of money there. I just don't understand why. We're, this is way. To me, it's setting a precedent and. And maybe that's what we've been doing all along, Lance. If 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 we've been doing all that that all along, giving everybody breaks. And 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 not charging them, I guess that is, we've already set a precedent.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had a contract that's gonna be another entire season over. You know, this is a new. This is all of next summer, most likely. Whether you assess the money or whatever decision that you make tonight, if you guys want to be more strict and you want me to go renegotiate this, I'm happy to. Come back and say, hey, you know, contract reads this, sit down with Adam, and we can get pretty real with them on. What you want to enforce. So you're going to assess penalty over a time that they cannot work.
No.
And they can't.
That doesn't make any difference because.
No, no, and I I guess that's, that's fine. You know, that's what you're recommending is to, you know, remove money from the contract for not performance. When I've been in. Lawsuits over, you know, construction, it's always about, you know, what was your. Actual damages, you know, when you're going to fight it out over the money, you know, it comes down to what were you paying for? The LDs in these contracts are set up to pay. The engineers to be out there and to continue to pay them during their working duration. Is typically what I've seen because actual damages of not getting the job done just means that the street wasn't done this year. It was done next year for us, but. All the work eventually did get done. So you have to start thinking about it. And Adam may need to pull you into an executive session. And talk to you a little bit more because we're getting into his world and probably.
Sure.
Things that you you might want to, you know, have an executive session and talk about what.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. That's, I I just.
I think you could, you could definitely do it your way or recommend to do it your way and assess more damages. Add the thirty seven days in now. And just extend it to that time and then try to assess damages. You know, you're, you're going to be recovering a thousand and some dollars a day from the contractor during that time and all through next year.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred a day, probably through August, is what you're, you're going to do to this contractor.
Well, that's incentive to get the job done. I mean, that's, that's, that's what it's for. But anyway, thank you. Thank you very much for that.
Sure, yeah, let me know what you guys want to do. I mean, this is a recommendation that we sat down and. Tried to work out, but if you don't like it, don't accept it. If you want to do an executive session, do that. You guys can, can let me know. This isn't something you have to do.
Okay. So to clarify, so if. The motion passes, this is where we go. If a motion doesn't pass, then it means we can have renegotiation.
Sure, and if you want to just advise me, you know what you want to do because they're out of contract in three days.
Yeah. Just want to make sure we're all clear on what it is we're we're voting on. Any other discussion? For this, recall for the question? Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Hmm. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, passes four two. Here's the next favorite part of our evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to.
Let's go home.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Josh Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Call for the question.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. But but wait, there's more. Now we are moving into a work session.
I didn't get a vote.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Larson, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Do you want to stay in the meeting? Okay. Um, so, so here, here's our question. So it's ten after ten. We've had Mr. Malum and and Mr. Savan here staying. Uh, we can either say we're out of town, out of time and reschedule this, or both of these items. Uh, or we can at least get high level uh, in honor of them being here as well as Lance to talk about Title III.
Let's do it.
Yeah. Okay. So, Mr. Malum, come on up. Uh, and again, as we talked during the break and and Mr. Savant, of course, come, come join. Um, if we can try to keep this to a presentation, avoid it turning into a discussion, but recognize this, this can come back again in a future work session. And thank you all for being here and for persisting. That is burly.
Our pleasure.
Okay, can we offer you candy? The Easter Bunny came and visited. We're happy to share our candy.
So the purpose of us uh, presenting to you at this work session is to try to engage city council and through city council, all the constituents of the city of Lander in trying to figure out exactly whether or not we're on the right track in terms of what we want to focus on um, regarding code changes in two areas of Title Four. Uh, one is uh, with respect to what we're going to broadly call the short term rental issues that we heard some discussion and concern about when we had our last round of Title Four changes. And the second part is with regard to the appeals process. Um, when the city makes decisions, at which stage do those come to the Board of Adjustment? Do they go straight from the Board of Adjustment to um, the district court? Or do they have the intermediary step of going through city council prior to going through um, to district court? So um, I'm gonna spend most of my time and hopefully it won't be long on where we're at with the short term rental issue because the appeals process is something that's being handled more um, with Adam and Ray Jean in the legal side of, in the legal department, I'll call it. Um, and so presently in our code, there's definitions for hotel slash motel and short term rental. We believe that those all leave something to be desired and that they don't sufficiently address what we perceive as being the problem. And so we want some feedback from you guys as to what uh, the city believes is the problem or the potential problem with short term rentals. We perceive part of that problem as being um, loss of housing stock to people that don't live in town and don't necessarily contribute as meaningfully to the community as somebody who does live here full time. Um, and also um, having the opportunity for folks who do live here um, to generate revenue to um, essentially help offset their own housing costs and to feed that money back into the community. Um, so with those things in mind, I uh, took the liberty of drafting three definition, or rather, four definitions in place of the two that presently exist. And we're not necessarily beholden to any of this language specifically, but we want to provide this as a starting point to see where you guys think we ought to be. And so I've tried to define a short term rental as a dwelling or a portion of a dwelling that is rented to a customer or customers for a time period of thirty days or less and which is the primary residence of the individual offering the dwelling or portion of the dwelling to be rented. Um, regarding the definition of a hostel, which is something that came up at a rather recent meeting. Um, I proposed the working definition of a business which rents single beds to customers for a time period of thirty days or less and in which all other living quarters and amenities are shared between renters. Regarding the definition of a motel, I propose the definition of a business which rents individual rooms to customers for a time period of thirty days or less where entrances to each room are accessed directly from a parking lot. And for the definition of a hotel, a business which rents individual rooms to customers for a time period of thirty days or less where entrances to each room are accessed from a common hallway. Um, you know, like I said, we're not necessarily beholden to the specifics of any of these definitions, but I think it makes sense to uh, turn those existing two categories into four so that we have a better idea of what we're talking about and therefore a better opportunity to control what qualifies and what kind of license or what kind of conditional use permit is going to be issued by either the Board of Adjustment or the city or both, depending on the type. Um, with regard to like what exactly the type of business or other thing is. Um, Mr. Savan brought up the fact and we incorporated this into this table of changes that we included in the agenda packet. Um, but, and he can probably speak more to this than I can, but there is a distinction in the International Building Code between establishments where the maximum occupancy is, or rather, where the occupancy level is going to be more than ten persons at a time and occupancy levels of less than ten persons at a time. Um, and so we tried to draw that distinction because that just, that difference in the building code would have a pretty significant impact on what a person who's trying to do something with their property can actually do with it. Um, and we felt that in certain situations, we might be um, perhaps confusing or muddying the waters when we say you can have more than ten people here. Um, but then you've got to clear it with the building code. And um, I think this is probably a good opportunity for Chris to jump in and explain the rationale there because I don't think I covered it very thoroughly. Um, so go ahead.
Um, I I think we're just trying to decide what is the um, the character and nature of these short term rentals. And if we're aligning ourselves with the building code, that number for an R one occupancy, not zoning district, but building occupancy code um, is greater than ten, requires a level in and transient occupancy, so less than thirty days to stay. Uh, requires a different standard and the building department can speak more to that specifically, but what does that look like? Uh, it looks like a change in the actual physical building, ADA parking, exit signs, um, you know, square footages per occupant. Um, and so it creates a building that if you were to take a short term rental and put fourteen people in it, it changes the nature of what it looks like to the residents that are around it. Um, you know, there are ways to maybe integrate some of this parking and locations that uh, aren't as visible to the public. Um, you know, maybe uh, changing some of the ADA routes so it makes it appear more residential. But I think it speaks to the actual physical change in the structure. So aligning, uh, setting up an occupancy level that aligns with our building code but also uh, um, allow us to mitigate the impact that it has, not just to the physical structure, but to the overall um, number of people that are coming to our residential districts, which is, I think, one element of trying to preserve the character of communities that I think a lot of residents speak to. Um, you know, Zach did a very good job of talking about, you know, we have our economic benefits. Um, you know, it adds additional rooms to to the uh, uh, our room nights uh, to Lander. There's an economic impact from the sales tax uh, and lodging taxes that are gained, also the sales tax revenue that's spent in town. Uh, but it's also balancing it with the nature of a residential district and preserving it. Um, there's also property rights. People should be able to potentially gain some income from it. But you know, what is that line? Is it ten? Is it twenty? Is it thirty? Um, and so we're trying to find a way to manage those impacts. And I think that aligning it with the building code draws that distinction. Um, so if you're looking through the table, that's what that second column represents is um, the occupancy within those IBC and IRC when being the building code, when being the residential code, but um, the R one being a transient occupancy and uh, the R three being um, a more permanent occupancy. So people are familiar with their buildings because they live there for more than thirty days. Um, they know how to get out of the building. And so there's a different set of codes. Um, so with that said, um, uh, the table, if you have questions about the table, we're more than happy to to answer it, but we kind of broke that down to zoning districts and very specifically um, try to address uh, things or to address those zoning districts and uh, you know, the number of occupants that can be in an individual building. And also, uh, right now, we're, we're suggesting that a primary residency clause be there. So if you are the, you have to be the owner of the property and prove that's your primary residency through tax returns or voting um, record or whatever means that be established at some later date by uh, a more detailed um, writing of, you know, in order to, if it were to come up. But uh, right now, we're, we're recommending that. I think everything's on the table, though. But that was one thing that we, we thought may um, prevent the over-commercialization of some of these uh, out of town individuals maybe coming in and buying up properties to commercialize our residential districts. With that said, I don't have anything else to add. Zach?
Okay. Yeah, I I have another thing to draw your attention to in in the table there. Um, you'll notice under the column that's titled permitted slash conditional. Um, a permitted use, of course, is something that's allowed by right. Um, it's not something you have to get any kind of um, conditional use permit for, for example, um, such as you do in a residential district if you want to operate a short term rental currently. Um, we added a, a piece to this, which we think is useful in a couple of ways, and that's having an annual short term rental license. Um, we've heard a lot about licensing tonight, and so don't get too scared. Um, but basically, our rationale for considering um, the utility of imposing this requirement of a short term rental license in um, really just the residential zones is because we want to have uh, some degree of oversight or some mechanism for oversight to first of all, determine that if we do want to move forward with a primary residency requirement, um, how do we continue to verify that over time? Uh, we don't want that to be something that you get once, walk away from it and it and gets ignored. Um, it also, um, there could be other things that we could put on the licensing portion such as um, making sure that a person's compliant with uh, collecting and uh, remitting lodging tax to the state and making sure that there's the fire inspection done to a satisfactory standard and that people are compliant with those types of things. So um, we're considering that it makes some sense to have this licensing um, requirement in addition to the conditional use permit because those are two different things. The conditional use permit, of course, is something that runs with the owner of the land, not with the land itself. But say you own a piece of property, you get your conditional use permit to allow you to have some sort of short term rental pursuant to your application. And then once you get that conditional use permit, then you have the obligation to uh, demonstrate to the city through some fashion that we haven't fully considered yet and would like your input on um, that you are compliant with these other requirements. So that's our thought process going forward. And just to reiterate a little bit, we do want um, council to consider this and talk to the constituents about it. Um, in part because we don't want to have a situation like we just experienced. Um, we want regulations that make sense. We want regulations that have a purpose. We want regulations that are going to actually benefit the people who live here or who seek to move here and, you know, start a family, settle here, for lack of a better term. So um, as we move forward and as we continue working on this, we want your feedback. Uh, we want the feedback from the people that you represent, uh, for, against, completely unrelated. Um, maybe not completely unrelated, but if somebody suggests something that we haven't thought of, we want to hear about it. Um, and so that's where we're really focusing our attention right now because we've heard this from the public at the, you know, meetings from when we did the last set of Title Four changes. We've heard this from um, public comment in specific applications that we've heard. So um, this is our request to please give us some guidance. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Thank, thank you first for your presentation, uh, both of you, and again for staying for our record breaking meeting here. Um, I think my question would be, uh, by when would you want comments and feedback from council? And I would, I'm making an assumption that the best way to do that is through email. So you're not um, having to play kind of that, the telephone game of council uh, and then bringing it forward. I know you, you and all the members welcome conversation, but I would say written format is a, that probably best way to have consistency so that all the planning commission members can see that. But what kind of timeframe is helpful to you?
Well, we haven't put a specific timeframe on when we want to have something that's more or less um, fully fleshed out to present to you guys to vote on and amend. Um, I guess that's about all I can say about that. I I don't want it to drag on as long as the last Title Four change um, went on. We are trying to make these changes much more narrow and closely tailored to what we feel the concerns of the community are. Um, I'd say probably through the end of the year for sure, maybe longer than that, but.
Oh, okay. I was saying, I was gonna ask, like, when's your next meeting? Should that be our deadline?
Oh, no.
But.
Um, I mean, that would be wonderful. We would certainly accept comments and even if you forwarded emails from your constituents, we'd love to consider those. If you talk to a whole bunch of people and condense those thoughts down into some sort of, you know, written succinct format, we'd love to consider that, too. If you want to come to one of our meetings, you're more than welcome.
Yeah. What would be a good amount of time to speak with constituents? Because I imagine, you know, these are, there's something at least somewhat concrete. Is this something you want to put in front of your constituents over the course of a month? And then, you know, two weeks or a month after that, provide us with comments individually or through the liaisons? And then we can work to refine, you know, these tables and like, I guess, like, does like the second meeting in November make sense? If we have one then, but to receive comments back or?
And when?
Sorry, not in November. I apologize. Uh, December, December.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Cassidy?
Can I make a suggestion that we look at um, maybe the first or second week of January? That gives us an opportunity to kind of reach out into the community and and our couple hour of efforts in the coming months are gonna go nowhere because people are gonna be traveling or doing things with their family. So it gives us some time to miss folks and try to connect with them and then capture those comments for you.
I think that makes sense.
The first meeting in January, we can have. And um, do you have the date for that? Or Ray Jean, do you have the date for that? Just pulling out a. I can't, I should know the schedule because I was with you all for quite some time.
I know it's the first and third.
The first meeting in January actually falls on the first, so it would be the fifteenth would be the second.
Okay, January fifteenth.
Third Thursday, fifteen.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, if I may, uh, when those comments come in, I would like them at a pointed place, whether that's to your liaisons or me. And then we'll share them with the commission all at the same time. I want to make sure that we're careful in not uh, conversing back and forth so that we don't have a meeting.
So thank you for that point. So I would say let's direct them to Ray Jean. So that way we don't inadvertently end up having email conversations among us, which becomes um, a public meeting inappropriately, so. And potentially, if you want to be C seat on that as the chair, can certainly do that.
I think it's fine for the single point of contact to be to Ray Jean. I think simpler is better. Consistency is, uh, makes it less likely things will get lost. So that sounds fine to me. Um, as you talk to your constituents, I would um, ask, I would encourage you to consider what their concerns are about short term rentals or if it's even a concern at all. Um, and I would ask that, you know, just very open endedly, how do you think the short term rentals can make things better, make things worse? What are some concerns that you have, if any? Um, and use that sort of as like an open ended form of um, addressing the issue. Because um, and feel free to share that what we've already prepared and get folks feedback on it. Um, of course, understanding that this is absolutely not something set in stone. Um, of course, understanding that this is absolutely not something set in stone. This is more the product of, um, I guess, a pointed brainstorming, couple of sessions, um, rather than it being a fully considered offering to you.
Yeah, and I'd encourage any constituents to come to our meetings in the meantime, express their opinions at, uh, the public portion of our planning commission. And, uh, and just talk with us one-on-one. I, I know I've had a couple of individuals reach out to me just to talk about what short-term rentals look like in the community. And, um, I think we would all welcome that discussion, so I'm happy to elucidate it more if, if you feel that's appropriate.
Great, thank you. Yep. Yeah, can we, do we have an electronic copy of this? Is this what you're referring to that?
I just opened it on the city, um, the city website where the meeting and agenda packets were for the work session.
Okay.
And anything else for our two guests tonight?
Mayor, if I may? Yes. Just on the process. So we'll spend, um, two months here listening, input, feedback, getting that feedback to y'all. And then we will, you'll incorporate, make changes. Like, we're not debating tonight, so there will be a work session for us on this.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, and then can I just ask one clarifying question at the very beginning here? Are there abilities, reasons that you consider, um, having off-street parking being unique to some of these businesses? Right, short-term rentals being a business, aside from what that actually like zoning code would allow for. So, or you're gonna have ten people perhaps in a house where you might not have had ten people. So, or off-street parking requirements up on the table here to tailor to these businesses?
So presently, we haven't discussed any specifics with respect to what might be required in each instance for off-street parking. Presently, the way that we address the off-street parking issue and question when it comes up is on a case-by-case basis, depending on, for example, how many occupants the applicant indicates that they're going to have at a particular period of time. Um, you know, kind of what the community is like, you know, is this something that's, um, you know, on a fairly busy street? Is it something that's in a, you know, completely secluded residential area, um, and things such as that? So, uh, the short answer is no, we're not planning on tackling any specific off-street parking requirements with this suite of changes. I would be interested to hear from your constituents as to whether or not they feel that's a problem and something that we need to address. Um, but right now, I, I personally, I'd prefer not to get into that. I think that that is pretty well-served, um, with the requirements of the conditional use permit process, um, at least for short-term rentals. I think I can speak for the whole planning commission that off-street parking is something that's often a concern. I would say that it's extremely difficult to address, um, by having some sort of blanket ordinance or requirement because inherently, these applications are quite different from each other and thus the off-street parking requirements are quite different.
Sure. Yeah, is it a family of six coming, all in one vehicle, or is it six friends in six vehicles? Yeah, but, but we can certainly share our thoughts, uh, in, in that feedback with you.
Please, we encourage that.
Yep, wonderful. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Last but not least, Lance, bring us home.
All right, I'll do my best. Um, we're having to adopt new codes to keep our enforcement local. And so we recently got a letter from Monica Colby with the state and she just said, hey, you have to adopt the 2024 IBC, the existing building code, the fire code, including certain appendixes, the mechanical code, the fuel gas code. These are all 2024 versions and then the 2023 NFPA seventy, uh, in order to keep your home rule. And so as we look through these documents and adoptions, we haven't been doing them right in the past. And so there is certain portions where you're supposed to, it says, insert your name, and we haven't done that. And, uh, you know, do all of the things that we're supposed to fill out when we do these adoptions. So each one of these adoptions kind of needs to be its own thing. And then if you're gonna amend it, you have your amendments below it. So it's gonna get longer and look more complicated. The reality is, we're trying to do the same thing that we had in the past. Just restructure it, make it so that it's easy to do in the future. If we're gonna keep the same amendments, then we should be able to adopt a new version when the state tells us we have to. So Hunter's gonna summarize this in an email. He wanted to just send it to you on the proposed changes. The one change we are making is we're at the 2018 residential code. And if we go to the 2024.